Well, we're a little bit past nine o'clock, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order this morning. If you'd stand with me, we'll have the flag salute and follow that with prayer. Pastor Ryan Regoza with Soul Wanderer Mission Church is going to lead us in prayer this morning.
Good morning, everyone. Prayer is a conversation between man and God, so I feel that if we're going to ask Him for something this morning, we also ought to be willing to listen to something He has to say as well. So I'm going to read here real quickly. "Let not your heart be troubled; you believe in God, believe also in Me. In My Father's house or many mansions, if it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you. And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you unto myself, that where I am, there ye may be also; and whither I go, ye know and the way you know." And then Thomas said to Jesus, "Lord, we know not whether you go or how we can know the way." And Jesus said unto him, "I am the way, the truth, and the life; and no man can come unto the Father but by Me." This passage of Scripture I chose to read this morning before we prayed in honor of Easter that we're getting ready to celebrate this week. This week is known to some as Holy Week, where we prepare our hearts and our minds to celebrate the resurrection of Jesus Christ, which was the way that was provided for us to be able to go to heaven and be able to receive eternal life. God is our natural environment. When He spoke to the ocean, fish appeared. When He spoke to the land, trees and grass and shrubs and flowers appeared. And when He spoke to Himself, He formed man. God is our natural environment. And if you take a fish out of water, it withers and dies. If you take a tree or a flower out of the ground, it withers and dies. And if you take man away from God, he will wither and die. God knows that, and He created a way for us to be able to be reconciled back to Him through His Son, Jesus Christ, and the sacrifice that He made at Calvary. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Our precious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together today, Lord. Father, I pray today, Lord, that you will give humble hearts to all those that speak. Father, remind those that are in power that they're just men. Father, remind those in power, Lord, that they're here to serve the people. Father, remind the people, Lord, to stay humble and to understand that without governing authorities, we would have chaos. Father, give us peace as we speak with one another, Lord, and give us the wisdom and the ability to resolve the issues that are at hand this morning. Father, I don't really understand or know what all is done here today, but you do. And if we ask you, Lord, to be here with us, Lord, and put your hand of wisdom on us, Father, I pray, Lord, that each one is willing to look into their hearts this morning and see what it is that you have for them. Father, we pray that your will is done, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yeah, thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here this morning. Pretty good turnout. I know there are several things we've got to work through today, so we'll try to keep moving along. But is there anyone here moving to Item Four on the agenda for public comment this morning? If you are, come forward to the podium and state your name and where you live and what it is you've got to say. Well, seeing none, we'll move along to Item Five. Any additions or evasions to the agenda at this point?
Mr. Chairperson, I would like to move 6H out of the consent agenda for further discussion.
Okay. We'll move 6H down to 7F. We'll do that toward the end of those. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Any others? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, Item Six. Questions or comments on that? I guess we had one, but... Not. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move as amended.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Friesen, seconded by Commissioner Bogner. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Moving to business items. Number seven, 7A, is Horizon's quarterly report.
Good morning. My name's Vicky Mader. I'm the CEO of Horizon's Mental Health Center.
Morning.
And I'm here to give you just a little, some updates of things that are going on. I wanted to start with sharing what we like to call "Mission Moments." I shared with you that we had an employee, Dakota Sanders. He is a very valuable member of our Assertive Community Treatment Team. And that team focuses on individuals with severe and persistent mental illness that are struggling and at risk for hospitalization and incarceration. And he's a peer support worker, which means he has lived experience in those areas. And he is having a book published about his life and the struggles he's gone through, and we're pretty proud of him for that. His goal is that he can share and impact more lives than what he can touch here in Reno County and make a big impact on other people's lives. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. We're pretty proud of him. There's a link if you want to watch the video, and he does his story, so I wanted to share that. Another update I wanted to give is I want to give some information about competency and restoration in the jail. So if you're aware, if somebody is incarcerated and they're determined to be incompetent, they have to go through what's called restoration. And that usually takes place in Larned. It always takes place in Larned. And there's a very long waitlist for that. There's been some changes at the state level that has provided us the opportunity to do some of that restoration actually in the jail. We started that recently, and we did complete our first restoration here in Reno County Jail. So that's a big win. I think it's a big win for the county. I think it's a big win for the jail. And we will continue to provide that service when we can. Not all people are eligible for that type of restoration, but we want to provide it if it's applicable for them. So we're pretty proud of that, and I wanted to share that with you. Any questions about competency and restoration?
Just kind of explain that process, if you would, what that entails that you're doing there.
The restoration process? I'm not exactly sure what it entails. I don't provide it. I didn't do the training. I know that it can include medication services, getting individuals on medication, therapy, case management, whatever we need to do to help them get back to a place where they could be competent. There's some individuals that can wait years in jail to get to Larned, so that's why it's kind of a big, it's a big win for us.
Does that seek to get them out of there and reintegrate?
It's to get them so they can stand trial.
Oh, stand trial, okay, yeah.
And...
I didn't know if some were purely in there for mental reasons, maybe.
No, this is usually related to being able to stand trial. What also will happen is we've had it where somebody goes to Larned, they come back, they've completed the restoration process, they're good to go, and court gets delayed, and they decompensate, and then we have to start the process all over again. So having someone there in the jail to be able to help with that should help keep that from happening in the future, so. I provided some service updates with you. We've had some increase in staffing, and I just wanted to share that our services that we're providing are increasing. Probably a year ago, we were averaging about 8,000 services in a month, and that is steadily increasing. The demand for services is not going down. We have referrals for services every single day, and we are still short-staffed, and we continue to recruit. Finding master-level clinicians that can be qualified mental health professionals is very difficult. There's a shortage of those, so we try to be very competitive in that space. But we're pretty proud of all the increase in services and how we're helping the community, and I wanted to share that. I did get a question about the makeup of those services, and I don't know if that was...
I said that to everyone.
You did or didn't?
I did not.
Okay, so I was asked about that, and I did provide a breakdown of those services. There was some concern that the services were just casual conversations, and I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that the services counted here are medically necessary services that are billable. And so there's guidelines. It can't be just a casual conversation. That wouldn't meet those requirements, so we only count those types of things in those service counts. Just for some, we did like, in the month of January, we had 1,883 therapy services. Another big one is our community psychiatric support and treatment services. We did 2,833 of those services in the community. And then there's a bunch more that make up all of that. Any questions about those services? All right, I did provide our audited financials for you. Some highlights of that is we did have a positive change to our overall year-end financials. We ended the year at a negative 1.2 million operating loss. There was adjustments to that. The major adjustments were based on some overaccrual of 401K. We collected more from patients than we anticipated, so we allow for not to collect, and we collected more, so there was an adjustment there, and then some adjustment to our, a positive adjustment to our investment income. So our operating margin ended up at a negative $689,000 for the year. Any questions on that? Okay, and the other thing I shared with you is our current financial statements up to January. And I won't go through those unless you have any specific questions for me on those. I will share that we did get a rate change on January 1st, and that is based on our expenses incurred in the previous 12, in a 12-month period. It ran from June of '22 through July of '22 through June of '23. And so we do what's called a cost report, and we submit that to the state, and they utilize that based on the number of services we provide to determine our payment rate. The payment rate went from $205 to $311 per Medicaid service, and that is strictly based on our expenses, so.
We got a question. So running at a loss, that's obviously not good business sense.
No.
Is that something that you anticipate doing in the future, or like, where is that money made up from?
So one of the main reasons we're running at a loss is because when we did our initial cost report, we underestimated our anticipated costs. So we were able to hire staff at a much faster rate than we anticipated. So we had to incur those expenses upfront so that we can get reimbursed for them the next go-around. So we should make up that difference pretty quickly with our new rate and anticipate ending the year on a positive note. I would agree. You don't want to run negative. Any other questions for me? All right, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
As always, a very thorough report.
Yes, appreciate the work you do. Thank you. Moving on to Item 7B, United Way County's presentation on Seven Cups.
Do I need to stay at the podium?
Yes, please.
Can I pass out some cards for...? Okay. My name is Carla Stanfield. I'm with United Way of Reno County. And I'm giving you a card of about seven cups, which I'll talk about here in a moment. But you might be wondering first, why is United Way up talking about mental health services?
Yeah, I was going to say, I need you to be up there to restate that, if you would, Carla. Thank you.
So again, my name's Carla Stanfield. I'm with United Way of Reno County. And I just passed out some cards highlighting the service that I'm going to talk about here in a moment. But I wanted to open with a question that you all might be asking yourself about why would United Way of Reno County be talking about mental health? So we at United Way work to better our health, our income stability, our education, and we respond to natural disasters here in Reno County. We also respond to the needs of our community members. So every three years, I believe, we have a community health assessment tool that is put out to the community for folks to take a survey. Each time that has been done in the last several years, the number-one reason or concern for community members is mental health or access to mental health. So that is one reason why I'm here today in front of you. The other reason is we have some really fabulous partners in our community, one of those being the county and another being Horizons. About a year ago, the county asked us at United Way to consider some type of programmatic opportunity for our community concerning mental health. Horizons was at that table with us as well. Those folks suggested Seven Cups, which is an online platform that I'm going to walk you through here in a moment. But that reference came from a group out in Hays that was previously using this site. So we looked at a couple of options, and we landed with Seven Cups as being probably the best place to start. So I handed you a business card. I also have some flyers, and I've taken some screenshots. But if I could have you jump over to the chat, sir? And I can, yes, thank you. So Seven Cups is an online tool. It is free and able to be used by anyone, anywhere in the world. In fact, there's something like 70 languages available on this. But what United Way is supporting is a paid platform for three years where you, as a Reno County resident, are able to access the premium offers. So I'm going to kind of bounce around between what information I presented you already and what is up on the screen. So Seven Cups, again, is a free platform. We are paying for the premium offers. This is not, before I dive into the actual service, this is not meant for someone who is in active crisis. So if someone is actively having suicide ideation or saying self-harm comments, that is something that needs to be taken right over to our crisis team here locally, or a person can call the 988 national hotline number. They can also text that number and receive mental health services immediately that are crisis intervention. So I want to make sure that that points understood. I also want to make sure that when we dive into the platform that you understand that United Way is supporting the premium offers. We are not paying for one-on-one therapy for community members. That is an option that is on this website, but that is not part of the commitment that United Way has made. So when you log in through the specific portal, which is available through the QR code here, yes, sir?
Yeah, so is it just 988, or is there an actual number?
Both of those numbers are here on the back of the card. The 988 is the national number. You'll see that Horizons also offers a 24-hour crisis line here for our community. That phone number is listed there, but I'll read it out loud here, so we have it in the notes. That can be used any moment, 24 hours a day, as the 988 can be used as well. Again, you can chat with the 988. Can you chat with your Horizons team? So it's phone call only for our Horizons team. So back to the platform. You can access a very special portal that United Way has created with the Seven Cups team through this QR code. I also have flyers. If you prefer a flyer version of it, you can go right here to this portal. You enter in our website password, which is UW Reno. Again, that is all information that is on this card or in the flyer. You're then able to access the full platform. You'll see here that it does look a little bit like a social media site. If I go to Home. I've already logged in. I wanted to avoid any technological issues that we might have as I logged in, so I already logged in and skipped that Home screen. So this is what it looks like. It is, looks like, and is developed to reflect a social media site, but it is very positive. So this chat feature you can access here or over here is the free service that's available to anyone, anywhere in the world, all the time, 24/7. What we've paid for at United Way, I want to quickly walk through that, are two areas. The path area and the community area. Path breaks down into two separate things. I can choose my own path to take. So these are growth paths. What that means is this is a segmented, prompted interaction that I will have one-on-one with the Seven Cups platform. I can choose, as you can see, a variety of topics here in the middle to go ahead and take that growth path. I can also self-identify any of these issues. Obviously, you can see there are things on here that you would think of being associated with mental health that is quote-unquote "familiar," bipolar, borderline depression. But there's also things here that you may or may not have associated with mental health challenges, like work stress, you've got parenting, you've got all kinds of things in here that you can dive in specific to a challenge area that you identify. I also wanted to show, this is probably my personal favorite part of this platform, the mindfulness exercises. If you dive into this area, you can learn how to do breathwork exercises. You can take a guided meditation, everything from three minutes to 20 minutes and everything between. You can learn how to manage stress in a positive, healthy way. As you can see, this is just the guided meditations that I'm taking you through here. So there's a couple of choices in this platform. The other paid premium offer that I wanted to highlight with you all today is the community section. Again, this is an opportunity for you to self-identify something that is your personal challenge area, and then you are able to communicate with people from all over the world who are working in similar issues. So you can say, "My communities, I tried a group leadership and development course." This is my own personal profile that you're seeing here, so I have logged in. I've made myself available on here. I've chatted with folks. I've done some of the guided meditations. So far, I'm finding very helpful things. We've also soft-launched this to community with some partners, like the Mental Health Task Force that we helped convene to our Horizons partners and some other nonprofit partners for feedback. I will, if I have time, to share just one quick story of a user who had a positive experience. So this person is diagnosed with some mental health concerns, does have some prescribed medication, and specifically deals with panic attacks. So this person was feeling a panic attack come on, took their medication, but in the meantime was able to jump onto the chat feature, got started with the chat. This is a volunteer listener. I will preface that as well. This is someone who has gone through a training program with Seven Cups, but may or may not be a licensed clinician. So you're interacting with another community member on Seven Cups that has been trained to be empathetic, to ask leading questions, and to work through very basic things like breathwork with you. So this person hopped onto chat as this medication was kicking in, was able to do some breathwork with this volunteer listener through the chat, and was able to de-escalate themselves as that medication kicked in. So we're finding it to be a helpful tool. I think it's a very personal tool, so I really encourage you as community members to grab a card or two, use the services, and give us a call at United Way. Tell us what you love. If there are suggestions that you might have for other community members, we would love to hear that, too. Can I answer any questions?
You have a lot of breath exercises, meditation, and et cetera. Do you have anything related to biblical-based?
I honestly have not dove that deep into it, sir. I would have to look deeper.
Yeah, yeah, my question was kind of along the same line. I've got another question first. So the survey that's sent out, how is that sent out?
The community health assessment survey. Can I lean on anyone? It's not necessarily my role at United Way.
That, I believe, is where the health department was involved in the community where they find out services.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm familiar with that, then. And so the second question I have is, so are we involving any local churches in things like this? Because it seems to me that, you know, I mean, there's a God-sized hole in all of us. God created us with that hole, so we would need Him. And so it seems to me a church, a local church, because we've got a number of good Bible-believing churches in the community, would also be a great place to send people. Do we partner with any local churches?
Absolutely. At United Way, we seek partnerships cross-sector. So we have governmental partnerships, nonprofit partnerships, and of course, faith-based partnerships. The faith-based community in our Reno County area does provide a lot of hands-on service. They also obviously have some funds that they're able to distribute for various areas of their particular mission. But yes, we lean on relationships across community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
They kind of did mine, but I was going to ask one. At what point, if you're talking with a consultant or whatever you're calling them there, are they trained to recognize if they need to be referred to for their help, I would assume?
Yes, sir. That is absolutely one of the training bits. This is a platform that's been around for 13 years online. As I said, they had a community of users already, about 2,000 users. 2,000 users had already made a login from Reno County as we signed up for this. I've just asked for first-quarter stats from the team at Seven Cups regarding United Way and Reno County's usage. I don't have those numbers, but I will share those with Randy. He sits on our board, so I could share that there and allow you all to see those numbers as we get those back.
Okay, good. I know it's anonymous, but if there happened to have been-
Yes.
This is kind of out there, I guess, but criminal activity that calls in. Are you bound to do anything with that?
So this, I will-
Somebody in distress?
This is not something that United Way Reno County is running, so we have no access to backend. We don't see chats with folks. This is, as you said, anonymous, which is one of the things that we felt like was attractive for community members-
Right.
To be able to dive in anonymously. I would assume that through that training process that that's something that they would cover with that.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Any other questions? Really appreciate the moment here in front of you all. Appreciate the relationship here with the county, the support that you all offer us in so many ways. I know that you're helping our community with childcare through the ARPA funding. I know as a community that you are engaged in all these conversations regarding mental health and the health of our community at large. So we just appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Appreciate it. Item 7C, Public Works Annual Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was here for another reason. Completely forgot about my annual report, but you have it in front of you, and I can answer any question you may have. There's a lot going on. Do you have any questions?
You're pretty good at improv, aren't you?
Huh?
You're pretty good at improv.
I've got a comment.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Don and the Public Works Department for their work. I know the Commission was, provided an update on a grant request that we made to Senator Moran's office on Monday. Don was instrumental in getting that done in a very short window. And he was also the one that gave me the tip that this might be an opportunity to solve a problem for the Bueller community that's been around for a long time. You know, I was told that the bridge is still a little low on our priority list. We have a lot of bridges, and so to kind of bring that up on the priority list, we needed some outside funding. So this grant request from the appropriations at the federal level would allow us to lever some of our funds to kind of place this as a higher priority. I think you saw my letter to the Senator and just indicating a lot of challenges that the Bueller community faces every three to five years related to flooding and the impact it has when our two roads to Hutchinson are flooded out. They include, you know, inability for our fire department to reach out into the county because it's based in Bueller, a very high increase in response time by EMS, which is based in Hutch. And we have a nursing home that has high-risk individuals that need, it's frankly not fast enough the way it is getting from Hutch to Bueller, and doubling that at any time is a risk to the community. And then finally, our schoolchildren. Bueller is a very unique school district, a very large district for the size of community you have. And I think we send over 800 kids into the community every day. And when they have to go north to, I think it's a Rappahoe Road, it's, if you know K-61, there's a curve there. It's a pretty dangerous intersection. And trying to shove a dozen buses and very poor drivers all through that intersection has been dangerous. There have been accidents during flooding events because of all the traffic there. And so appreciate the Commission understanding the particular priority there. And I wanted to thank Don for all his work. I know he was working over the weekend to get this in. And then we had a huge amount of support. We got support from City of Bueller, Bueller PD, Hutch, or Bueller Fire. Certainly, our emergency management group supported it. We had some state legislators that supported this, as well as the school district. All sent in letters. So I think it's going to be a very, very strong application. So thank you, Don, for all your hard work. And then I was going to ask you, because I know the Jansons are here, and I think they've raised some concerns related to, you know, what's this going to do to the people around the bridge? And when this orig-, I came to this Commission as mayor of Bueller five years ago or so, and at the time, it was a similar situation where we don't have funds to replace the bridge. Maybe we could raise the road. And a little study was done, I think an informal study, and it was said that, hey, if you don't, you know, widen the bridge and just raise the road, there could be some flooding impacts. And they're here for that reason. And so I was hoping you could address that and explain the difference here on this application.
So what you said is true. You can't just raise the road north of the bridge without causing flooding back to the west, which would flood those residents there. You cannot do that. So the only way that you can fix this problem is to build a bigger bridge so that by raising the road, you don't, all this water going to the bridge and not cause any additional rise in upstream. And when you first brought this to me, I, it was difficult for me to be on board on, even though this is a very important project, but to replace a bridge that I knew I couldn't get a grant on because it didn't meet the criteria of a grant, that I couldn't support that. So the bridge wasn't ready to be replaced, as far as that goes. But it is, the bridge was misdesigned, the road was misdesigned, 82nd Road was misdesigned. And that's very unfortunate that it's caused this problem that should not exist. The people from Bueller should not have to leave this county to get to Hutchinson. And that's what happens when we have this flooding. But now that we have a possibility of getting 80% of this paid for through a federal grant, now it does make sense. The bridge is at the age where it already has a weight limit on it now, so it can handle legal loads. And even though it couldn't get the type of grants that I normally apply for, this grant that we're applying for, it's a very possibility. So it is a good project, and it does need to be done. It's going to be a very expensive project. It's, right now, like Daniel said, I worked on this quite a bit. And I wanted to get a letter of support from KDOT. Well, you have to get that to them 14 days before the deadline, and I was working on this Saturday. So, and the deadline was Monday. But I got it. I got that letter of support from Topeka. I thought I could get it from the district engineer, but they're not allowed to do that. So it created a lot more work. But anyway, this project's approximately a $7 million project. And that's for a new bridge and raising the road and solving a lot of this issue of the flooding. And with, this grant pays for 80% of that. That is a good deal for this county. Because we should not have, we should have never had this situation to start with. So that's why I really recommend going for this, and it is a good time to, because in 10 or 15 years, when we'd normally replace the bridge, you're going to replace it with a bigger one then. You're going to raise the road then. It's probably going to be a couple million dollars higher then than it is now. Because from 19 till now, it's a million higher. No, it's 1.5 million higher. So if we can get this 80% grant, it's great, and we need to do it.
Did that, I see the Jansons here. Did that help a little, understanding that we're trying to make sure that it doesn't impact you and the people around?
When you raise the road, are you going to put more waterways underneath the road? Are you going to raise? Are you just going to try to make all that water go underneath the bridge if you want to expand?
The water's supposed to go underneath the bridge. That we're going to expand and not go up against the road. And the bridge that we will build will cause no rise in water higher than it is right now. A matter of fact, it should be less, but it will not cause any higher. But it will prevent water from going over the road as often as it does now.
Another question I have is responsible for keeping the waterway clean?
Don, you're a creative question, so if the question- So you're wanting to know who's responsible for keeping the waterway clean?
The river. I mean, right now, we've been through two droughts. There's blood, lumber, there's so much wood in that river that that water's not going to flow, even if you make the bridge clear. Because it can't flow with all the trash that's in it.
Don-
I was wondering if the county was responsible for taking care of that, or the state, or federal, or-
Neither.
Responsible for keeping the river cleaned out?
So it can't flow?
So it can flow.
The county's responsible for keeping it clean on anything that has subject to damaging the bridge. And we're allowed to go upstream two lengths of the length of the bridge in order to clean the channels. Beyond that, it's private property.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you letting me hijack the conversation for a second. But, you know, I've dealt with a lot of flooding issues in Bueller, and I understand there's always concerns. And I want you guys to know we're taking those into consideration and understand their other impacts. And I'm confident Don's considered all that, and the engineers will consider that. And, you know, everybody has an idea of what's going to happen when it floods. And at some point, you just got to rely on the engineers. So I, again, thank you, Don, for your work on this. And hopefully, we get the grant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any questions on my report that I don't have? Thank you.
Well, it certainly would be a great service for folks out there. That's been going on for a while now. Item 7D on Business Items, County Wide Zone. Patrick, have you been addressed this?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. It was titled County Wide Zoning. Probably more appropriate just to call this our regular solar update, because it seems like this is a recurring topic. I thought I would quickly recap where were the counties at in solar. Then staff from Public Works and I have come up with three general options that we wanted to, and I'll go over with the Commissioners for how to deal with some solar issues. Then it'll be up to you guys to kind of discuss, decide if you have enough information to give some guidance, or if you need more information, or want to ponder it some more. So, solar. Within the last two years, there's been a huge increase in interest in solar, both commercially, residentially, and small-scale throughout the state of Kansas. And it's been a regular topic at our quad-county meetings, as well as at KAC. In Reno County, we put a moratorium countywide in place because we did not have adequate regulations for dealing with solar issues. In the portion of the, that was a countywide moratorium. In the zoned portion of the county, they've been working through those issues, as you're aware, in their orderly manner. The, in the unzoned portions of the county, it's been discussed what, how the county would like to proceed out there. So what staff has, have, is presenting today are kind of three different paths that could be taken. They are all three legally valid. They're all three appropriate. It's just, it really is a decision to make of which direction we want to go. Number one is just to keep, we could keep in place the status quo. It's unzoned for solar, and it could, legally, it could just remain unzoned for solar. Obviously, the issue with that would be, solar development could happen without regulation, with pros and cons with that. But if we ended our moratorium tomorrow in the unzoned portion of the county, there would continue to be no regulations for solar. Option number two, the Commissioners could instruct the Planning Commission to review, basically do a review of the map and apply the current zoning scheme to the countywide. That would require a public hearing. If the Commissioners wanted to pursue that, they might also do some town halls, which was discussed last time, just to see what the interest level would be. Pros and cons. The pro would be we'd have consistent countywide zoning. The con would be we'd have consistent countywide zoning, I suppose, because. And then the third option that exists, even though we refer to Reno County as being zoned and unzoned, every portion of Reno County is zoned in some fashion. It either has our full zoning scheme, or it is part of the Wind Energy Conversion System District. One option would be the Commissioners could direct Planning and Zoning to do a text amendment to the Wind Energy Conversion System District, essentially asking that district to also regulate solar. So we would probably rename it something like the Renewable Energy Conversion District, or maybe just the rural Reno County District. But essentially, we could add solar regulations in with the wind regulations that we have on that portion of the county that's not part of the entire zoning scheme. Both Option 2 and 3 would go through the typical Planning Commission process. It would be, the Planning Commission would do their work, draft the appropriate amendments, hold a public hearing on them, listen to feedback, make a recommendation to the Commissioners for, to either, just like we did last week, either adopt, send back for more revision. So that was fairly fast, but those are the three pathways that staff have identified. Don, Mark, did, is that sufficient? Okay. Now, I guess staff's open for questions and for you guys to discuss, or take more time to ponder, or whatever you would like to do with it.
Well, I do have a question. I know there's probably others have questions, but it's really a two-separate issue, the unzoned and zoned, because the regulations are for zoned unless we do countywide on commercial solar, correct? Still two different motions?
Yeah, I mean, they're kind of two, I, yeah, the, how, two different motions. We are in the, the zoned portion is going through the process. They're close to finishing up limited scale, and then the next thing they'll deal with is, are you doing residential or commercial next? Then they'll do, and so they're on their, they have their process. The question is, do you guys want to start a process to do anything with the rest of the county, the unzoned portion? But, so there'd be two different tracks. It does get very, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I know at the last meeting, I did bring that motion up to do that exploration. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think we owe it to ourselves and the constituents in those unzoned areas to hear from them. And that's been my feelings all along. They have an autonomy out there. They may want to stay that way. They may not want a moratorium or a ban imposed upon them, or they may want it imposed upon them. But if we make that ruling in here without hearing from them, I think it's an unfair ruling. I really do. Because that, after all, that's who we work for, and we need to hear from them out there. There may, in fact, be a majority out there that wants to develop wind and solar out there. And so, but for us to sit here where we've heard from those areas that have been zoned and those zoned areas that wanted to ban those things in a majority and make that move to impose that on the rest of the county, I'm not saying I'm for it one way or the other, but I think we owe it to ourselves to take the time with that portion of it and find out whether they want it or not, give them the pros and cons for having a zoning and not having a zoning, and whether we wanted to have a ban or just leave it open. After all, they've moved out there. They want their autonomy, and they knew the inherent risks of going in that area if they don't want wind or solar in their backyard or scrapyard or anything else. And I think we ought to explore that. That's just my feelings. And I know I'm one person, but. Don, or, yeah, Ron, I know you're- Well, we've skirted this issue and skirted this issue and bounced it back and forth forever. I've had contacts with a lot of my citizens in my district, as well as those from outside my district. And I started on with what you said, Commissioner. This morning early last night, I started on some alternatives with regards to, should we decide to go out and have meetings in the county? I've put together, I've started putting together some options to tech, explain what wouldn't change if it's completely zoned, and what would change. And I want to get together with Planning and Zoning and all of you.
And I want to get together with planning and zoning and all of you, and we can look at this as a, as something we can put out to the people, so they have an idea and something to have a conversation with if we do these meetings. And I think that's very important, that we set out what it would do and what it wouldn't do if we do countywide zoning. From that standpoint, we've skirted this solar thing for way too long. It's taken a lot of time from planning and zoning, from Public Works, from the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission itself, and I feel that, as far as, I haven't heard from everyone in my district, okay? But in the events that happened just recently in Texas, where there was somewhere close to 10,000 acres of solar panels that were hammered, and I don't know how many were destroyed, but it did puncture, when some people said it wouldn't puncture the exterior, it did. Baseball-sized hailwell. And I know that there has not been any discovery of any harmful chemicals, such as PFAF, or arsenic, or any of that, discovered yet, out of this, out of this close to 10,000 acres. We don't know what the effect might be later on down the line. I'm personally not willing to risk my children, grandchildren, and your children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, on what's known today, when we've learned lots of things in the past regarding this. I think if we look at the fact that maybe we instruct the council to, and mine's almost an item four, okay?
It occurred to me, I was like, I wonder what the fourth option will be that I haven't thought of. My staff have, we have made some, reached out to some areas to do town halls, and we could, I guess, option four would be, we could take this conversation out into the, into that district to see what kind of response you guys get. That should have been an option four.
And I think that it would include zoning and all the above that we've talked about, and trying to hinder, trying to make the Planning and Zoning Commission more efficient, where they don't have to spend so much of their free time involved in this, and get back to what their original duties are to be, and this, I know this is one of those duties, but I, I would like to see, and I, if it goes enough, I would put this motion into effect, that we instruct, we give some direction to the county councillor to write a resolution, or whatever legal necessities are, to prohibit solar energy systems commercial. I believe that's the definition, because in the present, as I read the present system, Article 25, 108B only applies to limited solar operations, not commercial solar operations. And also, there's some other things we'll get to later on, but to prohibit that in countywide, as, if I'm reading the correct things, they've stated that if solar to be a real factor, there's gonna have to be over 10 million acres taken out of production in order to supply what the federal government wants to see with regard to solar production. I think that's a terrible hit in this country, in this county, for our agricultural industry, whatever would apply to this, but I just feel that it's time to, we've discussed this, we've talked about it, there's no, and so I would basically say, item four, okay, councillor, is that we prohibit large-scale utility or solar energy system commercial, and only allow limited solar, as defined in regulated Article 25, to be applied to the whole county.
So, thank you, Commissioner. So, my legal opinion, based on my research, is that to do the prohibit, we can do a prohibition, but we need to, in my opinion, go through planning and zoning like we would anything else, whether that's the countywide, or just amending the Wind Energy Conversion System District. The Commissioners could absolutely direct the planning commission to make that reg.
Make those statements.
Yeah, and I think the direction they would want is, do you want to just amend the Wind Energy Conversion System District, and just do it through that direction, or do you want to do the countywide zoning? But, but those are the two options for how to regulate solar in the unzoned. We can't, we, in short, we cannot by resolution do it, we have to go through a zoning process.
However the proper process is, okay? I wasn't sure of that, because I didn't talk with you earlier, but I think that, I think we need to get some clarity and get it done. And by prohibiting commercial solar, and allowing limited solar countywide, to me, that's the proper way to go, at this point in time, in my research and understanding.
Don, you got a question?
Well...
Or comment?
I was gonna add to what Ron said about the incident in Texas, and what glared out at me that we don't have, and apparently, nobody has researched, there's no third party to check on whether those chemicals are there. When you read through the news articles on that, the people involved, people living next to it, are coming down on the county commission in those counties, because there were no regulations, and no third party checking into what happened. The assumption that the county itself, who's been asked to check about the possible pollutants, didn't have a regulation in effect that would give them that authority. States may or may not have, but these people are asking that there be a study, and there's nobody to enforce it, or even check it. You put an animal project out there, a confined feeding, or whatever, it reaches a certain level, they don't do anything on the lower end, but it reaches a certain level, and your water has to be tested, you have to turn in soil samples to keep your permits. Nobody's requiring this of these large scale, and I'm not so sure they shouldn't be required, some of it on some of the smaller scale. As far as personal, that's small enough to me that it wouldn't affect that, but who's making the decision and making the statement that there was no pollution there? It's the one outfit that's got all the financial responsibility for cleanup, and any bad publicity is gonna, is financially gonna hurt them. There is no third party that they're reporting to, or creating a base level through water samples, or fertility, or soil samples, that would show in an incidence like this, if you went in, you would have a baseline to work off of, and know whether it actually did or did not do anything. We're speculating here, and we're, we've got a new enough industry, yes, they've been around for 30, 40 years, I had one of the first ones in, on a pump in a pasture. I'm not saying it doesn't have its place, but the size of the, is where we come in. If a couple pounds the size of that desk get hurt out in a pasture, you can scoop up the dirt if you have to, you can mitigate it. Even on 10 acres, it costs somebody a whole lot of money, but it's doable. But what do you do with 4,000 acres, 10,000 acres? We're early enough in this thing, in my thought process, that we could allow the limited and personal, because should some of these things turn out that way, we can mitigate it. But we're a long ways from being able to mitigate something as large as 4,000 to 10,000 acres. And if we don't have a third party to regulate, nothing's ever gonna, Ron made the statement, well, they can't say, they can't say who's, whether it's caused a problem or not. Well, you can't say if you don't have anybody to go in and regulate it and check it out. It's never gonna happen. We do it in all other forms of special uses, but this is one that gets a pass because it's been labeled green. They should have to jump through the same hoops and have the same types of, if it's gonna be here, and if you're not gonna do that, it shouldn't be here. You can't take that chance.
Can I jump in here just for a second, if you don't mind? I'm seeing two issues here, the ban of total solar for commercial in the county, and we've got a regulation that's pretty much developed for the zoned area. Those folks have spoke publicly and said they want to ban commercial solar there. Am I wrong? Mr. Mark, would you, just for a second, if you don't mind? I mean, we're sitting on top of regulations that are pretty much passable at this point in the zoned area.
Mark Farneson, county planner, are we talking about the commercial?
No, the regulations, not the commercial. I know we're talking, we need to add the commercial in, to make sure we ban that in the zone, but we're talking about two different areas, and so, and not having that expertise, I get that, but we've heard from one side of it, and I'm afraid we're being pushed around by the side that's in the zone for the non-zone. And I'm not necessarily against what you guys are saying, but it's driving me crazy in the fact that we haven't heard from the other side. And that's why I think we gotta push for a, some kind of a hearing to hear from them. Now, they may have an outcry and say, do the same thing, but if they're zoned, they have certain protections, they're not gonna get unzoned, and they need to know that, they need to hear that in public hearings, need to hear that from us. And I don't want to put somebody on the spot. Does anybody have any insight into this, sitting back there? Would you mind speaking this morning?
No, I'm happy to, whenever you're...
I mean, this gentleman deals with solar, I happen to know who he is, and deals with solar on a daily basis, and maybe you got something you could give us insight. You're not really a plant, you didn't come here to do that, but I'm just asking, if the board would indulge me to have him speak, I'd love to have him. Bill, if you're comfortable doing that, just on some of these topics, if you have, if you have some background on some of these topics that have come up, just maybe to help us a little?
Well, I actually do have, and I'm not a, I'm not a...
Yeah, would you state your name?
Oh, yes.
I know you're not from here, but originally you are.
I'm Bill Newton, I grew up at Haven, owned a farm equipment dealership here in town, and some other companies, currently live over just east of Valley Center, a couple miles. Full disclosure, I'm a co-owner in a solar company. I also was a liaison for Kansas Power and Light with cities and municipalities, and so I've seen both sides of it, and I, Ron, I appreciate your concern about the unknown of the chemicals and all of that. As a grandpa and humanitarian, I want to make sure that things are right. However, you should shut the lights off here right now. Look at all the power things that are going on right now, and all the chemical stuff that's going out of there, that's way worse than through solar. Now, I'm not an expert on chemicals, but if you, if you take that, if you take that concern that you have, and we all have that, I think that same concern, you just will shut the lights off. The state of Kansas is way behind 30 states that offer utility, offer residents to be able to put, in HOAs, be able to put solar on their property. They're regulating, no, they can't, and they use a lot of fear, they use a lot of stuff, and it's like, it's like Yao Butt. I mean, you start going down the Yao Butt. I've listened, I've talked to literally hundreds of utility companies, cooperatives, and they all have their own special Yao Butts, and it's just ridiculous when it comes down to logic, business, common sense, et cetera, et cetera. And so I don't know whether I can offer any light into this at all, but there's always this balance in this tug, if I bought a farm, and Gary's family owned a farm just north of where, on north, what is that, Plum? Yeah. North of the orchard, the blank orchard, about a mile, and we farmed up there, and I understand that Ark Valley is gonna put in a five or eight-acre solar farm, just south of there a little bit, and I want to bid on the one over in, that's gonna happen in Midora, that's coming up in about a year. And so when I heard about this, I thought, you know what, I want to come here and listen to see what you all are doing, what you're thinking, and our, the fear about the deals breaking, the solar panels, I get it, you got the same fear about trucks driving down the road with chemicals, right? But you're not banning the trucks, and you're not banning the chemicals, so I don't know where this road ends, but it's really a discussion that's just gonna keep this county behind the times, and I think the, so Ark Valley, from what I understand, and I was talking with Jim Sherry about it, is anybody here from Ark Valley? You are? Okay, are you the manager there? Okay. Jim Sherry is a very smart guy. I had a conversation with him the other day. He knows the utility business, and the citizens in the Ark Valley deal can actually get cheaper energy if they go with solar, as opposed to the energy that they're buying from Evergy. So I understand that piece of it, and we got just a lot of pollution from other things that, I don't know, maybe we're giving it too much credit, I don't know. So I don't know if that's what you wanted to hear or not, but... Any other thoughts or questions for me?
I have a point of order here, because we're going back and forth. I know, Ron, you have something in particular you want done, like, I'm not the chair, I don't know if it's time to make a motion or not, but we're kind of meandering around a number of different things, and I'm not even sure what we're trying to accomplish today. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you could reemphasize what, what this agenda item is for today, so we can kind of keep it, keep it on track, please.
Mr. President, and, you know, I did prepare the agenda item, and I didn't give a suggested motion on it, because, which may be my fault, but what, I mean, I think staff is trying to, we want to do, we want to follow the will of the commission, we want to understand what it is you guys want to direct us to do. So we've presented three different options. Option number one would not regulate solar at all. The other two would have some sort of system for regulating solar, and then...
Bill, thanks.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. And then what that, what those regulations would actually be is a whole nother discussion. So I, what I'm, I think...
Can, Mr. Chair, can we dispose of the question of, you know, what we're gonna do on, the agenda item is, are we going to expand zoning to the unzoned areas? Could we, could we dispose of that first, and then maybe talk about the particulars on solar?
Well, that's what I'd like to do, that's why I jumped in here to begin with. I would like to know whether we want to explore the zoned, unzoned areas and zone those, if we have a motion to move forward with someone, your staff directed to try to get some town halls and public, public meetings that maybe Public Works over there.
I think what I'm most interested in is, do you guys want to do this in a way that's countywide, the existing zoning, expanding countywide zoning, or do you just want solar regs in the Wind Energy Conversion District? Because we can do, and I don't, it's, we can do, we can get to solar zoning either of those two ways. I just need to know, and the planning commission needs to know which one. Do you just want us to add solar in with the wind, in the what we call unzoned portion, or do you want to take the existing zoning and expand it? Those are the two pathways for regulating solar.
So we need a motion for one of those two?
Well, if I may speak before somebody makes a motion, so in the beginning of this, I was very pro-solar, and in doing research, and in listening to people from the community, I think there's a valid concern for the watershed area, which is not the whole county, it's most of the county, but it's not the whole county. It's most of the county, but it's not the whole county. And I don't think the same concern exists outside of the watershed area, if I'm correct. I mean, and so my, my opinion would be to add a, a fourth option to, to regulate solar in the unknown, unzoned area of the counties that are in the watershed area. Because it seems to me that that's the, that's the, the thing that we, you know, causes the most questions. You know, I mean, yeah, it's most of the county, but it's not the whole county. And I think that would be the least intrusive way to do it and still make sure we're protecting the, the watershed area.
You, that, that option, yeah, that's a, that option. What that would look like to me and, and Don, we would have, we would instruct planning and zoning to create a new district of the watershed district and then create regulations for that district. So that would be a third zoning district in the county, which we can do. I just wanna make sure clear that's, that's how that would look.
So I have a question. Are you talking about large scale, commercial solar, or are you talking about limited scale? Or are you talking about all solar?
Me personally, I'm talking about all of that.
I just wanted, I know this is such a difficult conversation. When I, zoning districts, I keep using the word regulation. Whether regulation is banning is, is yet another topic, so. But to do any regulation, we have to, we have to know if it's expanding zoning, existing district, or, or the third district.
I'm agreeing with Commissioner Friesen. I, I think that, and Bill and Gary, I haven't seen you in all ages, okay? If we're, I wanna get back to this topic of zoning, countywide zoning. And, and to me, we can solve a couple of these. We can solve part of your problem with getting information from people. Although I've already gotten a lot of information from my district, okay? I haven't sat back and, and not gone to my district. But, and heard from people. And I, I think in probably two weeks to a month, I could get a lot of more information if all I have to do is make a few phone calls. And it'll get around, Hearst wants to know from people. But if we're gonna do the, to talk to people about zoning, let's include the solar and the wind, if at both. As long as we've got a moratorium on. I mean, commercial, I could, I could pretty well tell you that commercial's not gonna be thought very favorable of in, 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 in most districts.
Well, I think that was a general intent that I had to begin with, that we present that at the same time with them and let them have a choice. And that puts it to bed, it's out of our hands, we can move forward with something concrete to get done here.
As long as we've got a moratorium on, it will affect commercial, correct?
Yes, it, the moratorium affects commercial.
Regardless of what we do with the limited solar.
Well, as things become regulated, we'll adjust the moratorium to remove moratorium for things that have regulations, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but yes.
Simple, short, yes. Okay.
Somebody like to make a motion out of that nonsense? I don't know that I can figure out how to make a motion out of that.
You figured that out, you wrote, didn't you?
Not sure how we go forward with a motion out of that, but.
So, so are you wanting it to determine whether the unzoned part of the county wants to be zoned for every regulation that's in the current eastern part that's zoned? And make wind and solar, all of that, that same subject? Or do you know where you want, where you think you want with commercial solar? And then, and fix that problem first? I mean, it's, so if, if you know, if you think you want to prohibit commercial solar, so that goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have a public hearing on that subject. Then that would come back to you, and if that's the case, then there could be a text amendment making commercial solar as a part of the wind district now too. And that's how you either regulate something or prohibit something. And so that can be done separately than what you're talking about, so that issue's done. Do you know where you wanna go with commercial solar? If you wanna ban it, then it goes through Planning and Zoning, and that subject, commercial solar, would have to be added into the current zoned western part of the county that's wind. Then that, it would be zoned for that too. Then you can prohibit it, or you can allow it with regulations. We have no regulations on commercial solar right now, none, zero. So those would have to be created, but if you're gonna prohibit it, you don't need them. But it goes through Planning and Zoning. That's one subject. Are you wanting to put that in with zoning the whole western part of the county? With all zoning subjects as we have in the eastern part? That's another subject.
It's all large scale you're talking about, right?
Well, I'm talking about- And we haven't decided anything. Yeah. So, so I mean, the question is, is, you know, do we wanna look at zoning the whole county for everything? Do we wanna look at zoning the whole county for just solar and wind? Do we wanna create a new district just for solar that affects the watershed area? Or do we wanna keep the unzone, unzones with respect to solar? And also, the limited scale solar regulations that's presented to you now, if you pass that, that's only for the zoned part of the county. So we have to create in the, in the, the zoned part of the county, the district that's just wind, we will have to add that into that for, for limited scale solar. And then the whole county will be regulated for limited scale solar with these regulations if you pass them. Do you agree with all that, Mark? That's a lot. And, and, and when you bunch it all together, it gets pretty fuzzy.
That's, that's why you're suggesting one portion at a time.
Well, the, the first thing, you have regulations in front of you whether you're gonna pass or not. If you're gonna pass those and you want that countywide, we, we make in the, in the district out west, we create a limited scale solar in that district too. Now you're covered countywide for that. That's done. That's one decision, that's one, one thing you need to decide today. If you decide that you do not, if you wanna prohibit commercial solar countywide, then that goes through the Planning and Zoning, they have the public hearing there on that. That's all decided, brought back to you. And then if you wanna prohibit it, we also make the zoning district out west, we bring that subject in there. And then you limit it, now it's, now large scale commercial is zoned countywide. Now you prohibit it countywide if that's your choice. Do you agree with Mark?
Yes.
Well, let's get off the foot, let's see whether my motion will pass or not, okay? I move to prohibit large scale utility commercial solar facilities as defined in Article 25, Solar Energy System Commercial, and allow limited solar as defined and regulate, and, and regulated in Article 25 and countywide, both countywide.
Point, point of order, I don't think that motion is germane to this agenda item. Just because this agenda item is talking about-
We have to move into 7E to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine, move to 7E and do that.
This is kind of a discussionary. I think we should move to 7E and take that vote if we want to. A motion for approving the current regulations you've worked on, and then a motion, separate from my understanding from you, Don, whether we wanna proceed on with banning commercial.
If I, if I may make a motion then, I motion we table agenda item 7D until after we discuss 7E.
That's fine. That's why I say, let's move to 7E and have some kind of an action here. Now, if you would like.
Does my motion have a second?
Yeah, that's, you got a second.
I think everybody's in consensus to move on.
Just making sure we're doing right.
All right, now we're ready.
Did I miss something?
We made a consensus, yeah, to move on. We didn't say aye or anything.
All right. Let's see if I can restate my motion.
Well, do we wanna, do we wanna just explore 7E before we make a motion, or?
Well, we pretty much have, ahead of the time.
I guess, I guess 7E, Commissioners, just to recap what I think it is. Last meeting, you guys reviewed some solar regs on limited scale. You sent them back to the Planning Commission for some revisions, and I believe they made those revisions and sent them back to you. So there isn't, you guys handled most of this discussion at the last meeting, and now you're just looking at approving the corrections that you asked for.
So some of your, there were some corrections made of what you suggested and some not. Now, are you willing to set the regulations as presented to you or not?
I have a question regarding this, and I think it falls right into here. And that's Article 25, 108, Item 8, which is the battery. I, I feel that if, if a business or that maybe wants to put up not 10 acres, but one acre, should be allowed to have batteries, storage for backup, because they're gonna use that business to suppo-, supplement their, 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 they're gonna use that facility. And, and I'm all right with using the, the original wording that you had in there regarding NDFMA or whatever those articles are regarding construction building and, and, and put along with approval by the emergency services. But I think that someone will want batteries in a small land-based if they have an operated business.
On a business and storing batteries in a business is a total separate subject, so, total sep-, separate condition or use permit and not related to limited scale solar.
Okay, yes.
It's a separate subject.
Maybe, maybe you can include that in with a smaller one, but I just felt that, that batteries could be, we don't know what's going on down the line with regards to what Ark Valley may want and do if, if they continue this process. And I would just, to me, if they put up, they might wanna use batteries, that's the only thing I can think of.
I think the way that the commis-, excuse me, Daniel, was she gonna say-
No, no, I'm, I'm asking for the floor when it's available, so I think you have the floor.
I, I think the way this was looked at with limited scale solar was, it was a major deal if they're gonna use batteries, and the building was a major issue on whether it's fireproof, explosion proof, whatever. And when I talked to Ark Valley and other, they, there is not within their plans to use batteries for storage, for electricity storage, nor needing a building. So when we eliminated using batteries, we eliminated the worry about what kind of building it's gonna take. Now in the future, I guess, if they wanted to use batteries, then they will have to come before planning and zoning and with the text amendment, and then that'll go through that process to see, process to see if it's allowed. And then at that point, the type of building that's allowed will be identified and be in a regulation.
Okay.
Daniel.
I, I would ask, you know, I think Ron has a motion, if you would just make a motion, then we can debate it.
Let's make that.
All right. My theory is in a couple of weeks or a month, I'd know what people think, extra people would think, and if you're referring to that earlier motion.
Oh, I, I just would like to go home at some point today.
Yeah. I would move to prohibit large scale utility commercial solar facilities as defined by Solar Energy System Commercial in the Article 25. And you said it should be two different motions, so I will quit with that. If I can add, only allow limited solar as defined in regulation, and, and regulated in Article 25 countywide, I would put that in the motion.
Is that ahead of the other one we should make though first? That's my only question, should we approve the solar regs as amended first and then move to the commercial?
I, I kinda, I dropped out of the conversation because I wasn't sure I was helping.
Well.
I, I think, I mean, the Commissioner Hearst motion that hasn't been seconded is a different motion than what the agenda item was. But he has made a motion.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'm, I'm, I'll make a more limited motion. I'll, I'll move to accept the solar regulations as presented by staff for the zoned portion of the county.
Do we hear a second for that one? Seconded by Commissioner Bogner. Further comments?
I have comments.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I wanna make sure we're clear on, on what we're doing here. And maybe I'll just, maybe it's just me, but this motion would adopt certain regulations associated with limited scale solar. Can, Don, would you define limited scale again?
Limited scale solar is 10 acres or less of property and 2 megawatts of electricity or less.
Okay, so the, it's kinda the middle of the road. There's kinda three flavors here, there's kinda a small residential, which we haven't addressed, and we haven't prohibited.
Right.
And then there's full scale, large,
Commercial.
which is under moratorium. But we haven't necessarily addressed that either, we're just assuming it could be banned, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so now, now that we have set the table, the, I think I'm in agreement. Well, another question. So is there a regulation in the county on the storage of other dangerous things? Like, can I store dynamite in a building in the county?
Mark Von Achen, County Planner, there would not be necessary specific regulations on, to use your example, storing of dynamite or other dangerous chemicals. However, that type of land use has to go through the conditional use permit process, in which case the Planning Commission can set guidelines on that, and then this governing body could look at that and then adopt that through the conditional use permit.
And so in this case, if, so, so if I said, hey, I wanna, I wanna store dynamite in my building in the county, I would have to go get a conditional use permit?
The reason you'd be probably storing dynamite would be for some type of, of land use other than residential or, or agriculture, in which case, yes, then you would have to get a conditional use permit.
But let's just say I got a commercial use permit. And I didn't say at the time I wanted to store dynamite. Could I store dynamite in there later?
That would probably be a change in your conditional use permit. I mean, there, there's so many, you know, factors in what, what you're saying, you know, I know that, you know, if, if we give you a conditional use permit for some type of, of land use, and we didn't know that you were storing dangerous chemicals or dynamite, to use your example, then, then that would be a change in your conditional use permit, so then you had to come back through the process.
I'm trying to make the point, sorry, I'm trying to make the point that we're being very focused on one particular concern that isn't necessarily grounded in a lot of evidence, just a lot of presumption. We know dynamite is dangerous. We know batteries may explode, but generally, there's a lot of safety regulations and, and other things involved in that. And so I, I just, I don't understand why we're getting so specific on this issue when we haven't addressed the storage of a number of volatile
Yeah.
materials. So I would, I would motion to amend the motion to strike the language prohibiting battery storage.
I would second that. Conversations on amending that?
I have a technical conversa-
Yes, you can.
I would just point out, so Commissioners know, because you're amending a recommendation from the Planning Commission, it would require a four vote, not a three person vote. That's the only thing I want.
So we need to vote on the amendment? So, we need to vote on the amendment and then move forward with the motion?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Sarfors speaking.
Questions on that amendment? Let's take a vote on the amending, the amendment. You got a lot of traits, Cindy. Amending the motion, yeah, I mean, that's what I meant, so. Take the, the regulation for batteries out.
Commissioner Bogner?
No.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner White's on?
No.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Salute point.
I, I, I would, uh...
Yes.
Are you, yes?
I'm a yes.
Okay. I, I would challenge the county counselor on, on your, um, assessment there.
My interpretation is that what the planning commission, this is my, and you can correct me if, if I'm misunderstanding, this is from the planning commission, this is their recommendation, and to alter a recommendation of the planning commission, you can approve it with a three per, with a simple majority, you can alter it, but to alter it, you have a, a three-quarters majority, which is four out of five. Mark, Don, you guys, is that your understanding?
Can you reference statute?
I do not have the statute memorized, but I am firmly, and this is my firm legal opinion, because it has come up frequently lately for me, that would, to amend the planning commission's recommendation, you can adopt their recommendation with simple majority, but to alter it, you can, you can alter what they've given you, but it does require a supermajority.
That, that's my understanding as well, for what it's worth.
Can we just reference the statute, please? We don't, we don't need to hold it up for that, I'm just...
Well, and, I mean, another option would be to send that portion back to, um, planning and zoning, and then they can come back.
Your motion was to accept it as it presented, correct?
Right, yes.
And we had a second by Mr. Bogner. And the amend, mending of that motion failed.
Question I didn't get to ask is, we are still talking about only the zone portion?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Any further?
While we're at it, I want to ask, is, uh, our electric fence-type units to solar-power electric fences and ag wells, do they have to have a permit?
No.
Okay.
We do not require permitting in the county for fences unless you're, you're in a floodplain.
Commissioner Friesen, you'll find that in KSA 12-749 subsection D is, approves such recommendations in a resolution in the county to override the planning commission's recommendation by a two to, by a two-thirds majority vote.
Thank you.
Because we have four commissioners, or five commissioners instead of three, where that two-thirds pushes up to four.
Thank you.
And I, I will say that I'm okay voting against my motion to send it back to the planning commission with, uh, with regard for battery storage, providing that there's some sort of language that a suitable building be built to, to get, to contain the batteries. Um, I mean, so I, I've got no problem with my, voting against my own motion, um, you know, if you guys want to vote against it too, and then we can, and then...
We have a motion on the floor to go forward with it as presented, though, right now.
Right, yeah, so if that motion fails, then, I mean, I would be okay voting against that motion if you guys are wanting to send it back to the planning and zoning to have them look at the battery storage again.
Yeah. Questions for staff? Do we have, um, evidence that this type of use creates industrial pollutants?
No.
Okay. Um, do we have evidence that, um, battery energy storage is a danger to the county?
I, no, not that I, I mean, you can find anything that you want on your, your research and stuff, and so I think the reason the planning commission, uh, voted to just eliminate it altogether is based off of staff's conversations with other electric co-ops here that said that, right now, we do not have a, a need or a desire to do battery storage on there. And so, if technology changes in the future, and battery storage is now a possibility for them, then it's a simple text amendment to these regulations where we would allow battery storage on one of these facilities, and then at that time, we would start getting into what type of building are they stored in, and maybe, maybe research is done in the future where now there's a specific type of building they should be put in, and that can be incorporated in the regulation. But right now, rather than, uh, worry about what type of building it should be put in, if it's not a, a desire right now of certain lit, energy companies, then just prohibit it.
So, is it fair to say, like, we're making a presumption without evidence that there's a danger?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Um, so, i- is there a way to permit this, um, to where, you know, you look at the particular, um, application, and if someone were to say, okay, you know, I bought a square mile, I'm going to put batteries right in the middle, that, you know, I'm thinking of, like, you know, we permit, um, pipelines and, um, you know, industrial uses, and, you know, we had a situation in Haven that that thing could have blown up and, um, covered a mile and a half radius, and we allowed that in the county. This does not seem to be anything like that scale. Can we, rather than just blanket saying no, say, hey, give us a design that shows that it would protect the adjacent properties? Can we do that?
For battery storage or for a limited-scale facility?
Rather than saying no, we say yes, but you have to show that it's safe.
You, you really need to define what is safe in, in the regulations.
Well, I think part of the problem is that there's so many factors. Nobody wants to send it back to you to figure out all the factors. It's a case-by-case situation where, just like a lot of, uh, permits that you look at, you look at the, you know, totality of information and make a determination.
Yeah. There's a great deal of limited solar, and I'd say smaller scale than that, using battery backups at this point. There's a lot of other industries using battery backups on their controls, and so I think it is, it, it's something that we have to let them do if they need to do that, and it could come back to you.
Hey, all batteries can blow up, okay?
Exactly.
Period. Depends upon the condition.
Well, and, and my, my note was because I, I really think that that, that needs to be handled by the planning and zoning commission, and, you know, then, because we had sent it back last time, you know, put something in there about, you know, a building suitable to contain, uh, the batteries or something like that, just general language saying, and then the specifics could be, could be, uh, um, come up with during the permitting process. Those, I believe, are direction last time, but then I spoke to some solar companies, and nobody was planning to use batteries, so that was probably the path of least resistance.
Is that, you, would you, just, just a brief sidebar here for just a second, would you, I mean, I've got a professional that does that, could you just speak to the batteries, whether you need to install them, don't need to install them? I hate to do that to you, Mark, but I just, I want to clear this matter up.
But, and, and I, I need to double-check first. Is this going to open up public comment, and then will we get into legal trouble for that?
I don't want it to influence.
Or?
It, it's, I don't believe it's, it's a legal problem to let people speak on these issues. We've done it before on other issues. I mean, uh, it's the commissioner's meeting to, to run how you wish.
Excuse me, but we've got a, we're making a molehill out of things. We have already an opportunity for people that want to bad batteries to go back in, get the CUP, go through that process. I think this is null and void. If they want to have batteries, they can go back in, get a CUP. I don't see any sense in sending it back to, to the planning commission myself.
Well, would you change your vote?
I mean, I, I, I think, uh, now, I, I think that that really needs to go back to planning and zoning if, if we're going to be changing the regulations. I mean, I, I don't...
I mean, you can, you can put dynamite in your building, I mean, batteries are, seem safer than that.
Well, right, yeah, I mean, and if it's, if it goes back to them, then they can come up with the appropriate, like, I just, I don't like doing it on the fly, I guess. I, you know, I'd rather it go through the regular order. And I, and I don't see...
They gave us their answer. I mean, it, it was six to one, so we either have to override it. I mean, it, it does, I don't understand why we would send it back if you got their answer.
Well, no, but the, the, the version before that had battery storage with a building, and we had just asked for more specifics on the building.
And, I mean, the staff said, we're not changing our recommendation, right? Which is...
That's right.
No batteries.
Yeah.
So, this doesn't make sense to send it back. They already answered the question. So, that, we have an opportunity to override. We need four votes.
Like I said, Don, I, I think we need to look at the fact that, that, that an opportunity will come up, should one person want to put batteries in a building, that then they go back in and it's CUP, correct? Change of the CUP, is that correct?
Commissioner Hurst, incorrect, actually. So, as the regulation is presented to the commission right now, battery storage on a limited-scale facility is prohibited. You cannot do that, okay? If in the future we want to allow battery storage on a limited scale, then that would be another text amendment through, to these regulations. So, if technology improves or the will of the board changes, then we would go back through a text amendment and do that. Now, battery storage on what you had mentioned earlier, on a residential or, or farming operation, that's a totally different subject. That's considered residential, that's not, that's not limited-scale or even commercial for that matter.
Can I ask, so, I mean, i- if we were to remove this prohibition, I mean, they still have to go through a CUP, and the, the planning commission can still create conditions, like, if they see something unsafe in the CUP, like, they could say, hey, you can't put this 100 feet away from a residential, residence, like, that sounds dangerous. You can still put that in there, right?
They're going to look at the layout of the solar operation, where the panels are, are, are set, they're going to look at, um, ancillary buildings, you know, for, for the storage of equipment, so, but nothing with battery storage. They are not going to be allowed to put batteries on, on that facility.
But if we were to strike this...
If you would, yes.
But you would still take into consideration safety concerns in your CUP.
Yes, absolutely.
Like any other CUP, and you may say, that's just too close, or that doesn't...
Absolutely.
That's not safe. So, it really does what I was trying to convey, which is a permitting.
Yeah.
So, they, they have, they still have individual-case basis...
Yes.
Authority.
An applicant has to meet all the regulations that are adopted, but that doesn't mean that they just hit all this and it, it's, it's done, it's approved. It still has to go through that public hearing process. We're still going to look at, at any other factor that could be potentially out there, like you said, other safety concerns, you know, what locations...
It's pretty, it's pretty common. I've seen a number of their recommendations come back with some spec, you've identified specific things that you need to address that are maybe beyond what's in the text.
Yes, yeah, and that's...
Okay, I, I've got an idea. Why don't I make this motion? A motion to amend my motion, and let me know if this is clear or not, um, uh, to allow battery storage as was written in the previous recommendation, uh, two weeks ago, with the change to the building to, um, the building requirement to require a building suitable to contain the batteries stored within, as to be determined by the planning commission. Is that clear?
I'm writing it down. I am writing it down, so you are making a motion to amend Article 25-108A to return it to the previous language with an additional modification that the building, uh, that the building storing the battery be suitable to contain the battery as determined in the CUP process.
Yes. So, basically, this would allow batteries, if they're in a building, that is suitable to store the batteries, and then the suitability would be determined during the CUP process.
Does that be your amendment?
Um, I, I would, are you going to second it?
I'll second it. Go ahead. Uh, I think this, this, uh, solves the situation that, that doesn't interfere with any residential or anything else. This only has to do with small utility.
Oh, that, that was going to be my question, did, because when you used the term "commercial" or, uh, there was another term there, I didn't know what that meant. Because if you're talking "commercial," there's all kinds of commercial business going on.
Well, our limited scale is that 10 acres or less or 2 megawatts.
So, anything less than...
Anything larger than that.
Uh, okay, all right, I'm with you. I'm with you then, yeah, you're not going to find battery usage on there, uh, practical at this time, but for business, commercial business, absolutely it is.
I, I'm trying to get the commission to not get too specific, because I think it's, it's more problematic, and I think, I, I think your motion, in my opinion, should stay, you know, just, um, just, I think you should strike the restriction, and th- there's a number of things, like, you could have batteries that are in a metal housing in the middle of a square mile that are safe, because there's enough distance. I, I don't think saying, well, you need a building, is really conducive to the specifics. I mean, there's so many different variables, and you, you let the, you let the commission, the planning commission, they do this every time, they look at all the specifics, and then they say, like, okay, you need a building for that, or, okay, you need this much buffer. Like, if we, if we would just not be so specific, I, I think we wouldn't box ourselves in unintentionally.
Well, I was just going back to the language that they had before, that they brought to us two weeks ago.
I, I know.
And, uh, they, they talked about the need for a building.
It just doesn't, we don't know, like, we're trying to answer things we don't know, like, we, nobody is a battery expert here.
Right, well, that's why I was going off of their recommendations.
I don't think they know either. I think they were just trying to solve for a concern we raised, and it's typical with regulation that it gets overthought, and then there's new problems. Let the planning commission do what they do best. Would you withdraw your motion, allow me to make a motion?
Um, well, I mean, the motion's already been seconded, so we, so...
I didn't hear a second. Was it seconded?
Yeah, I have a second by Mr. Hurst.
If, if you're willing to do that, I'm willing to do that.
I mean, I, I don't understand the problem with ta, sending it back to the planning commission and letting them come up with the appropriate language.
We do this to them too much. We got to make a decision.
But I don't see a problem with letting them make that determination on a case-by-case, and certainly with this, the CUP, because it, there are smaller scale out there that have battery backups in houses, and if you're going to put it somewhere dangerous, they're in a house.
Light, light-touch regulation.
And we don't regulate those, so...
Would it be, could I make a comment?
Uh, state your name.
Uh...
Real quick, just briefly, Gary.
Excuse me?
Just briefly, but, yeah, state your name and address.
Oh, yeah, see, oh, yeah, this will be very brief.
State your name and address.
Gary Graber. I, I have a comment, and Randy, I think, I think we're looking at a bit, a bigger issue here, because there is battery storage in several other industries, uh, commercial industries in the county and the state, uh, that, that store, uh, and that have large-scale, uh, battery storage, and that if you adopted that limitation in battery storage, you could be, you could be getting into an issue with, with, with other industries that's not definitely, this is not connected to the solar industry. Uh, we collect batteries all the time from people, from companies in the area and the county and the state that have storage of deep-cell batteries, uh, that not related to solar, which could, you know, your amendments could, could affect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, where are we? Well, I, maybe we could, uh, uh, call for the question, um, or, or you could just call for the question, so we don't have to vote on that, too.
Well, you withdrew, right?
Yeah.
Nope, you stayed, okay.
Yeah.
And you're wanting to...
I, I'd like a different motion, but it's, it's, you know, can you withdraw a second?
I don't think so.
Well, we should vote on the amendment that's on the, on the floor.
Yeah, the one that's there, we should take a vote on that, and then we can, if it fails, we'll go in the direction. So, you don't restate what you've been, just accepting what they have?
Yeah, accepting the battery language, yeah, so, accepting what they have, and then the amendment we're voting on now is the battery storage being what it was two weeks ago with the change of, uh, to the building, making it suitable to contain the batteries.
Do, do we have that text?
I just, I don't have the whole text from last week.
What did it say?
It should be in the agenda from two weeks ago, so...
I thought it was a packet.
Yeah, it should be in the packet from two weeks ago. We should be able to pull that up.
I, I'm on Drive, so I don't know where it would be.
RenoGov.org.
It'd be... It'll 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 be...
I think you have to go up to the top to scroll up a little more, a little bit more. Our, um, agenda packets in our five minutes. This is a good tutorial for the public on how to get to our minutes.
Yeah.
Slow down the video if you can, go back if you wanna see that process.
This only applies to solar energy systems. Does not apply to anything else. It would not apply to anything within a city or their ETJ.
And so, and I, and just for clarification, the amendment to my middle, my original motion, the only thing it would change with this would be, shall be enclosed in a building suitable to contain the batteries with a locking mechanism.
Say it again.
The, the only, the, uh, so it would be this except for in eight A, shall be enclosed in a building suitable to contain the batteries.
You're striking that?
No, no, I was just clarifying my motion now that we've got the language in front of us.
So you're, you're just doing A?
No, A, eight for the battery storage, but then the, um, with the, uh, with the change that, so that all of eight, but in A, uh, shall be enclosed in a building suitable for batteries, for, for the storage of the batteries with locking mechanism.
Okay. I'd, I'd make a motion to amend that motion and strike eight A. So I, I could get along with everything except for talking about a building. So I think you can store, there's lots of battery, that's outdoor battery, that doesn't require a building.
Well, Dan, what are your thoughts? Because this was your idea to send the building back.
No, we're looking for a second on that motion first. Anybody want a second to that motion?
Well, no, the, uh, I mean, the original motion should, or the, the original amendment should be voted on before.
No, I'm amending the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what he was.
This is a second amendment.
Pull that line out of him out of there. I'll second that, see where it goes.
Okay. So if I can suggest, just to get this off the table, all, all I'm saying is creating a building requirement is not, is not necessary. And it's, it just, we need to let them make the determination. There's other requirements such as, um, distance, warning signs, and, um, combustion. So it's just removing the, the building requirement.
And Mark, you'd stated that if that is something you looked at in particular area that needed to happen, you would do that anyway, recommend it to the CUP if we took this out of there. If you took out the, the requirement for the building.
For the building.
If there needed an adequate storage facility in a particular instance.
We would look at that, certainly, but if there's no requirement in there, then.
I mean, but you would make the determination that it's safe.
The reason I think staff struggled and the reason the planning commission also struggled with this is what is safe and, and what is suitable to contain the batteries? I mean, what, what are we talking about? We talking about if they're on fire for an hour, the building will hold up? Or two hours or three hours or explosion?
That's why you don't box yourself in with regulation. You get all the facts and then you guys make the determination.
Yeah, and then that's why we eliminate that because it became too difficult to determine what that means.
Right.
And it became unnecessary based on other conversations.
Let's go.
So, Dan, I'll vote with you since this was your idea. So whatever, whatever your thoughts are.
Any thoughts? Shortly. On the amendment to the.
We're only, we're only talking about solar, uh, limited solar energy system regulations. We're not talking about batteries in the middle of a section or we're not talking about anything else. We're only talking about installation in a solar energy system. That's all we're talking about.
I'm just telling you.
Doesn't apply to another business. It doesn't apply to anything else. It applies to solar energy system regulation. If it applies to a business and a residential, it's gonna come under those categories.
I'm just telling you, you, there's batteries that are external batteries that don't require buildings. It's very common, just outdoor battery systems.
Well, and then you're requiring, are you gonna take that through limited scale, ten acres or less, and then down into a business and residential that has battery storage? That's my question because.
It's not a question. The others aren't a question. It's only so, applies only to solar energy systems.
Well, on houses, they have storage facilities in the houses. Battery storage.
Here, we're only talking about solar energy system regulations. We're not talking about houses. We're not talking about.
Well, they run on, some of them run on solar energy and have batteries in the house. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but this doesn't apply to that.
That's a different whole set of regulations, okay?
Yeah.
Completely different.
I know, we're not there. We have an amendment. Let's move with that, to his motion to remove the law. Is that correct? Item A?
Well, there's a, there's, there's an amendment to the amendment. It's been properly seconded. It needs voted on.
That's right.
Now, the question is, does the amendment need? I, I, I would opine that we can do whatever we want with a simple majority. It's just the final motion needs four votes. Because we're just, we're working on text here until.
I guess if your, if your motion, if you're just motioning to amend a text that's, I, I guess, plan commission, you can approve their document. If you change it, finally change it, you need to have four votes to change it. If you're still working on a draft to change it, then I guess you can do that by a majority.
The amendments need majority. The final motion, if it changes what they've suggested, needs a super majority.
Ultimately, you will need to get to four to change that.
There you go. Can we call it?
Let's go.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Let's vote on the amendment, Daniel Wade. Roll call.
No. You always start with the young start.
Are you voting yes or no?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
No.
Commissioner Hurst?
No.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes. Motion failed, three to two. Back to the original motion.
No, the, this is, we're still voting on the amendment to, uh, talk about the battery storage.
So we, we're bringing back eight?
Yes, eight with that, with the, uh, building requirement.
What was the motion, remind me?
To, uh, to bring back eight with the, uh.
Inserting those words, was that it?
Yeah, with, yeah, with inserting.
From the original.
Yeah, from the original.
Right.
Um, shall be enclosed in a building suitable for battery storage.
Okay. Are we done with discussion with that? Let's have a roll call on that amendment.
You know, all these farmers who had batteries outside.
I'm sorry, sir, you're out of order.
I understand, yeah, that's.
There's an effect on.
Solar.
Yep, no effect.
Solar crops.
Not an effect.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Commissioner Bogner?
No.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hertz?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes. Motion passed four to zero, or four to one.
So now we're on the, passing it for the zoned area with that change. So we need to vote on that.
Do we bring that, okay? Yeah. So this, this is the middle of the road, this, the medium-sized, commercial solar.
Calling limited scale? Yes, we, the, this is on the limited scale solar, the two megawatts and ten acres is what's before you guys.
A motion to accept with that amendment as presented.
We, you already, you already have one.
We did?
Yeah, you have one, it's seconded.
So.
It, it was amended once, now it's ready for.
Now it's ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, lost where we ran. Okay, roll call.
Well, I would like the motion as amended, read back, please.
Well, what I think, what I understood you guys to be voting on is to adopt. Well, it was in the agenda packet.
Well, it was in the agenda packet with the modification of what is in eight in today's agenda packet has been amended to what was eight in the last meeting's agenda packet with the change that.
Do, can we scroll that up real quick? Because I'll read it.
Yeah, whereas A will now read, battery energy storage systems, including all mechanical equipment, shall be enclosed in a building suitable for storage of the battery with a locking mechanism in to aid in preventing unauthorized access. So if you, what you're voting on is to adopt all of that into the county zoning code. And it still requires four votes because you've changed what the planning commission gave.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right.
I wanted the public to know what we were voting on as well as myself.
Yep. Let's take it to a roll call.
Commissioner Bogner?
No.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes. Motion passed four to one. All right, where are we at?
At least we didn't send it back to you guys.
Do we need to back up for some, for some clarifications on seven D now that we've done that?
You know, um, it's up to you guys. One, one comment about the zoning, unzoning portion that occurred to me while we were talking is countywide zoning's unpopular. But so much of this discussion is made so much more complicated because we have two different zoning schemes in the county. That's just my comment. I get, do you, do you wanna discuss this more? Do you wanna instruct staff to expand the countywide zoning, which would make some things easier and consistent? Do you want us to, do you want the plan commission to adjust the wind energy area to include solar? Do you wanna think about it some more? Do you wanna do the fourth thing that Commissioner Weitzel suggested? Uh, those are your options, I guess, on D.
What was the fourth thing you referenced, real quick?
So, um, extending those, um, the zoning that we just approved to the Cheney watershed area, creating another special.
In the unzoned area.
Yeah, but just in the Cheney watershed area. Because to me, that was, that, the big, the big, the big, uh, push with everybody that I, I talked to was they didn't want it getting in the water. But I mean, there are, there are portions of the county that aren't in.
But part of the problem with the big push you heard from was not in that area. And that's the problem I have with it. They have not spoke yet, and we need to give them a chance to speak. Regardless of whether one of the commissioners have explored it or not, there needs to be a public hearing. So they have a chance, am I right?
And, and there would be a public hearing, Commissioner. That if, whatever you guys send to planning, to the planning commission, the staff will draft, and then there'll be a public hearing that will, uh, and it will be noticed for people that live in the affected area. That will absolutely have to happen.
Okay.
This is pretty plain and simple to me. I, I like to categorize it down to just as simple as possible. Let's go out and have some meetings in the districts that are not zoned with a, an education system to let people know that without any zoning, they have absolutely zero rights. But it's an education system with papers presented to them to show the differences. Like, like I, I just think that it's time for people to know and will know then, coming out of these meetings, just exactly where the people want. That's.
Well, in one way or the other, our hands are, it's, it's their decision.
So. What item is this?
This was, we backed up to seven D.
That's, okay, I would make a motion to table seventy until such time that, uh, the commissioners that have unzoned areas can communicate back to the chair and, and have information ready for us to discuss.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Further comments, questions?
There's no comments on a motion to table, so we, we should take a vote.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes. Motion passed five one. Thank you, Daniel, for the motion, appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, moving on to eight A. If you dare.
By now, I forgot.
No, we've got, we've got, uh, seven F as well.
Oh, yeah, seven F removed six H. Six H was removed to seven F.
You gotta re-pride for a minute.
Yep, you did. Community correction policies was moved off of six H down to a seven F.
Okay, so, um, so these, um, these proposed changes, um, I asked some questions. And, um, if, uh, if community corrections wants to speak, I'm fine with that as well. But I'd ask some questions about, um, some of the language in here regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. This, this, from my understanding, came from the Department of Corrections. And, um, DEI is code for critical theory, critical race theory, critical sex theory, critical queer theory. And you get into, well, should we ban critical theory? It's an idea, blah, blah, blah. But there are eight different things that critical theory pushes. And so I, I asked about, so, uh, in my emails, and these emails are public records, so if anybody would like to FOIA them, they can. I asked, can I get a copy of the training materials go over? Well, there aren't any paper electronic training materials. Can I get an outline? Uh, there's not an outline. You know, can I get, can I go through the training myself? Well, there's not really any training on this, so you can't go through it yourself. So my thought was, why don't we insert language to make sure? Because I don't think our local people are doing this, but that doesn't mean that the training won't come down from Kansas, the Kansas Department of Corrections that will insert these critical, you know, critical race, critical gender, critical queer theory training into the county, um, once we pass the language. So, um, uh, so the, um, the things that I proposed banning in, what was it, was? Um, and I'll let Randy say where it should be inserted. But inserting this language in, um, that it would ban training that, uh, that says that one race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex. An individual by virtue of his or her race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. An individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of his or her race or sex. Members of one race or sex cannot and should not attempt to treat others without respect to race or sex. An individual's moral, moral character is not necessarily determined by his or her race or sex. An individual by virtue of his or her race or sex bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the same race or sex. Any individual should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological distress on account of his or her race or sex or meritocracy or traits such as hard work ethics, or hard work ethic are racist or sexist or created by members of a particular race to oppress members of another race. And this language was sent through the county administrator to the other commissioners head of the meeting, um, so that way, um, everybody could have a chance to review. But I don't think any of that's controversial, and I don't think we want any of that in our county. And so I, um, I'm, I'm sure it's not there now, but I don't want it to, next year, come down from the Kansas Department of Corrections, and then they're saying, oh, well, hey, we have to teach these things. So that was my concern, and so, um, I would motion to add that. Where was the appropriate place to add that again?
Right. Does Randy wanna come up and speak to that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll table that motion.
Randy, would you come up and speak to that, if you would, please?
All right, good morning, commissioners. Randy Regear, Community Corrections Director.
Alright, good morning Commissioners, Randy Regear, Community Corrections Director. Um, are there specific questions you would like me to answer regarding the suggestions?
Well, I know that you'd had an ongoing conversation with Commissioner Weitzel about these issues, and, and my understanding, you get assured of him that that's not something that's in practice here, and we don't necessarily adhere to those kinds of things, but, he's talking insertion into the policy. If we was to move to accept some of these things, how would that work for you, and, and what does that do?
I, I have no objections to inserting those, I, my recommendation would remain that we, um, approve it as submitted. Um, I think that, I, I don't want to minimize the value of what Commissioner Weitzel's added, uh, because I, I, I think those have value. I think the position I land on is something that maybe Commissioner Hurst and Friesen have, uh, spoken of today as light touch, keep it simple, I think the current policy's simple and clear, um, I think that we all could add probably a dozen things to the policy that, uh, of our own views that say, we shouldn't train this. And so that's where I think I would land on some, approving it as submitted. The only other thing I'd say is, if, if these are really critical issues to the commission that we really do not want uh, addressed in the county, then potentially, if this is not just a community corrections policy, this is something much larger that, that we would want to express. So, that, that'd be my overall summary.
Questions for Randy here?
No.
No.
So, you're okay with it as, as written, and as it came down from the state corrections? To, to mirror the original? If we were to add this, what would it do to you personally? You're not teaching it, it's not happening here. So if we leave it at the state stuff, we as a commission could go back and add that language if we saw a need to.
Certainly.
At any time.
Certainly.
And as long as the people we have in charge and the state isn't pushing an agenda on this county and the people of this county, we can let it ride.
I would agree.
The way it originally is.
I'd agree with that statement, again, this is a.
But we do have the option, should, that we could go and look at it.
Certainly, i- if you review this policy, this is a very, this is a lengthy set of things that they suggest we train people on. Uh, so this is, this is not just specific to those issues, it's much more lengthy than that, so, yeah, I, I would agree that we can certainly always go back and change that if we have concerns down there. And again, I, I think that as the climate changes across the country, a dozen more issues will come up over the next five years that potentially would need to be added, so.
Randy, this would not hinder or change anything to add this at all?
No, sir.
And just for some background, um, the, this language came when we discovered that critical queer theory was being taught when I was on the school board in, um, in the charter school, in the Yoder Charter School. And so this language came about through that process of, um, you know, making sure that, because, you know, it started there the same way it started here, um, they inserted the, the EI language into the thing, and then a year later, you know, uh, they were pushing critical queer theory into your, uh, Yoder Charter School. Um, and so this language came out of that, um, and I just copied the same language over here, because like I said, it was the same deal. You know, they, they inserted the language, and then a year or two later, they came in with, um, with, uh, you know, the, uh, the woke stuff.
Yeah, so we, you kind of make a motion. Yeah, that's what I said, so we need a motion to amend this and add this to the policy, and somebody want to make that motion? John had presented, but we'd seen.
Yeah, I, I'll motion to approve, um, what was originally item.
Six H?
Six H, uh, adding the, um, language I read out and, uh, emailed to both Randy and the, and, uh, Randy Partington, and had him email to the commissioners, insert it, where was the correct place to insert that?
Kind of defer to Randy Regear, but I thought it fits in this, right here on paragraph Cs where you were looking at on procedures, on category five under, or, I believe that was the area that it was, would be inserted somewhere.
We could certainly add that in there as those bullet points.
So insert it, um, after item C, after item B?
Oh yeah, it's C.
Yeah, after item C as bullet points. So, is that motion clear to everybody? So, approve it, but add this language.
Yep.
In, in, uh, in, um, under item C.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hirsch, any other comments?
Uh, I, I would just make the comment, I, um, really trust Randy and his judgment, and I, uh, this is a touchy situation, because I don't like, and I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I agree in principle on it. But I think I'm going to vote no, just because I trust Randy's judgment, and I don't want to go against staff here. Um, so I just want to make that clear. He made a recommendation, I think, Randy, I assume you're supportive of his position. So I, I, um, I, I truly believe if anything were to come up like this, he would address it, um, and bring it back to us, so. That's, that's why.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, you know, that's, that's how these things get in here, is, you know, um, is we don't take stands against them, and then, um, you know, for whatever reason, in forty years, Randy decides to retire, and then, you know, the next guy that gets in puts it in there, and then it's there. So, um, that, that's why I'm asking for the language to be included.
Mr. Hirsch?
I agree with Randy, I do, I also agree with Dylan, the fact that, that it doesn't hurt anything to be in there, and I think it's a safety factor.
So why is it, again, you, you just think it's, we're creating things that aren't? Tell me again why, why you recommend just staying where you're at?
I, I think that's, that's where I would land, is that we can add a lot of things into this policy, um, I'll, I don't know if it's necessary, so that would be where I fall on it, is, is it necessary to, to insert that or not? I'm flexible.
And it really, and it really didn't hold any weight with the state if we added it in anyway. They're going to send their policies down, correct?
Correct.
What's the, what's the alternative, reject this policy and then what? The whole policy?
We would, we would need to, we would need to do some type of amendment, um, in that, just to meet the standards. I, I, I think you make, you make a valid point, the state can train us on whatever they want to train us on, they're our funders. So, um, you, we, we have that issue, I'm sup, I, I, I have no objection to, to this wording, I just, I just typically prefer to thing, keep things simple, uh, uh, and again, we could, we could add a lot, um, so that's why, I'm, I'm fine with simplicity, but I'm not going to object it at all.
Yeah, and, uh, I will say that this is listed as optional training, so if something does come down from the state that addresses any of these eight items, then at that point, uh, they could just not use that training here locally.
Patrick, was you going to say something?
I don't want to make, is this, does the state update these every year, or is it not a yearly thing? Because I was thinking, if this is a yearly thing, then we can keep monitoring it and see if anything, uh, controversial ever came through your office, I guess. That's more or less what I think Commissioners are saying right now, anyway.
I believe it's on a two-year cycle.
Okay, we got a motion. Any other comments? Motion was to add this into the policy procedures, is that correct, into where, into that section? Paragraph C, and, and then accept the policy updates. That was motioned and seconded? Any further comments? Alright, roll call.
Commissioner Bogner?
Well, I feel it's going to pass, so. Yes.
It's always hard being the first guy in this.
That's what you get for having a B on your last name.
You know, I, you know, here and Randy shift kind of to neutral on it, and understanding this, I, I'm okay, and I'm going to follow. He took the first big step here, so I'm going to say yes to it.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners, just for the record, I'd like to retire before forty years from now, but.
No, sir, we've got you.
I can try to hang in there.
We've got you locked in now, I kind of inserted that in there, so.
Thank you.
Next time, maybe we won't make you wait this long, okay? Mr. Partington, would you like to give monthly department reports?
Sure. In the packet are the monthly reports for, for human resources, IT, maintenance, public works, solid waste and youth services, any questions on the monthly reports? Okay. Um, other item I had, I just wanted to kind of bring up that I've had been emailing, or I've given you guys in my reports about the housing study the city of Hutchinson is doing, and making it countywide. City of South Hutchinson, I believe, is also going to partner, so yesterday I did get the scope of services and schedule. I'm still reviewing through that, but, um, letting you know, I will be bringing that for a vote to approve county funding out of our economic development line item for approximately twenty thousand dollars or maybe less. So, that'll get, what that will allow is the study that the city hasn't approved yet, but if they approve it, what, will go forward, that all communities in Reno County will have a voice and be able to be a part of the study. Maybe not as in-depth as the city of Hutchinson or South Hutchinson is, but there will be meetings out in the unincorporated and the smaller cities to find out housing options, and what are the, what the needs are for that part of Reno County. So I just kind of wanted to bring that up and see if there were any concerns about us being a partner with the city of Hutchinson and South Hutchinson on this.
Depending on how that survey comes back, would that change anything that we did, because if it's kind of just, you know, hey, nice to know? I mean, then that would be, but you know, if like, if, if, if you think there's a possibility to change anything that the county's doing?
What it, what, what it could bring is ideas or give justification for investment by private contractors to invest in housing issues in Turon, Sylvia, Haven, various areas. That's kind of what the studies does, is here's what's, what the trends are, and here are the number of houses at different income levels, or, you know, price levels is needed in, in the different areas. So, if it says the city of Bueller needs twenty houses in, in the next five years or three years, then it would, it kind of gives the contractors a little bit more confidence, that really is scientific, there's scientific, or there's data showing that is a need, so that's what it would help do.
Okay, and then, and then is this, uh, something that would, is, uh, because the smaller cities wouldn't be involved, and basically the county's paying for the smaller cities to be involved, or would this be in the unincorporated, and, on the unincorporated areas?
Little, it's a little of both, it could be just mainly the city of Hutchinson and the city of South Hutchinson wanted to take part. Hutchinson may get a little bit of the, you know, perimeter of the city that has residential, but to get the entire county with the smaller cities and the unincorporated, that's where we wanted to partner. So it would include, that's us partnering, we're, Reno County's kind of taking care of, you know, maybe the costs that Haven may not have, or Nickerson may not have, I'm not saying they don't, they weren't asked, but the count, you know, we kind of took it upon ourselves to represent the rest of the county, separate from Hutchinson and South Hutchinson.
Anyone else? Are you done, Randy?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, county commissioner reports, number nine, you got anything, Dan?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, something was brought to my attention, I got an email here while we were talking, um, you know, Ark Valley's been waiting a long time for, for us to figure out what's going on, and I think we did that today. That there was a question on whether the moratorium is lifted for that particular subset.
Well, we'll take their permit application with, before next meeting, but we'll lift the moratorium next meeting. Um, that's an oversight, as we, because we had initially intended to put that agenda item on next week, it did, the moratorium didn't get updated yet.
Okay.
But I haven't talked to Mark, but I, I told Mark and Don this, this morning, if they want to start their paperwork, we'll start processing it in anticipation of formally lifting that moratorium next meeting.
So, essentially, we've solved limited scale solar, and we're going to permit that.
In the zoned portion of the Grido County, we have solved that, yes.
We'll carve that out of the moratorium.
That, that's, so next meeting, there'll be, uh, a request for you guys to pass an updated moratorium that will just, we started with the moratorium on everything, and as we deal with pieces, we're removing it from the moratorium.
Okay.
This is my, this is my visual, I don't know if that helped anyone, but anyway, that was my hands trying to explain it. Only in the zoned, limited scale in the zoned is now crossed off the list.
So, unzoned, you still, still?
Still moratorium on that, correct?
Yes.
And do we know, are they, is Ark Valley doing it in the zoned or unzoned? Um, my second comment would be, um, you know, I might advocate for a further amendment on that moratorium, to remove and ask the planning commission to not deal further with residential solar. I think, um, those are such small scale, um, that I don't think we need to spend a lot of time.
I, I think we already excluded residential solar from the, did we not? Because like, people can still get it on their houses, can't they, I, I was pretty sure. Yeah.
Rooftop, rooftop, well, we had, there's no moratorium currently on rooftop residential. We could expand that, if you guys, we could change that more.
Residential or commercial?
Well, yes, sorry.
I'd like to debate that next meeting, um, I just feel like, you know, if you can put a, uh, building, um, of that similar footprint, you know, there's no, there's no, it's no less aesthetically pleasing or not to put a building or a, a solar array, and it just doesn't seem like we need to waste planning commission's precious time with going into the nitty gritty of how someone can put a, what is the limit on, do you guys know what the limit is on?
Residential is fifteen KW.
It's pretty small, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's about forty panels, give or take.
Forty, yeah. So, I, I just don't think it's worth our time, and we should just let, let people in the county do that if they want to do it.
Same way with commercial though, I mean, why the moratorium on that? When I say commercial, it's.
Residential, like a business, it needs to be just called private, really, so private is residential kind of business.
Yeah.
So it's just private, we need to just prove that.
I mean, the state's gone through a lot of effort there to, you know, you, to allow certain sizes of interconnection, and they're pretty limited. If you want to look at the large size, you know, fifty KW, you can go to Bueller, look right outside of Idea Tech's office, it's, it just sits there next to buildings and nobody, it's very, it, nobody, it's just, it's not intrusive. I mean, it's no different than any other building, um, so I just think it's, um, inefficient use of, of further time with the county, so, um, perhaps depending on where consensus is, you know, if there's.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
If there's consensus, maybe, maybe we could.
I think you got three at least here that says yes, I think we ought to do that.
Maybe the only thing they need to concern themselves with is some setbacks.
Yeah, so, uh.
Protection of neighbors, that's the only thing.
Sounds like we could work with the chair to draft a further carve-out of the moratorium, and then just focus on the bigger, uh, commercial, so.
Thank you.
Um, and again, I appreciate, uh, staff, commission, uh, working directly with, with Randy on that grant this week. I know it was a short, short turn, but thank you for accommodating, uh, that as well, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bogner?
Yeah, about the main thing I'd want to speak about is the meeting we had with, with our EMS and, and, uh, they, they are contracted to us to provide the, uh, services, so we have those meetings and their, their annual meeting, and, uh, turns out that they are addressing some of the ambulance, uh, station, where they're stationed. station, where their station and buildings, things like that, that have already been mentioned or in the works to upgrade some facilities and speed up some response times and, and, one of, as we did last meeting, we bought some property, and that was discussed on how that was gonna be worked in and, and, uh, giving us some space back here at the courthouse for future expansion in this use of space type deal that was already studied before this present commission came on. But we are, we are addressing some space issues along with this issue. It looks to me like their financials were good, uh, less runs, but through better collections and various things they did, they, they actually came up with more money from services rendered from insurance and various other places that the county taxpayers piece in between got lowered by a lot of money. So I'm happy with the way they're operating their business. Thank you.
Mr. Urson?
I'm glad to see the, the housing program going forward with regards to including all the communities in the county, because I think this is gonna go a long way to where we can look at neighborhood remodeling plans, the NRP, and that needs to come up sometime this year, I think, to see what, what they can, maybe we'll get the data, data back from the NRP, from that study to do the NRP, how it'll work. I also attended along with Commissioner Walker, the EMS meeting, and I came away from there frustrated about one point. I'm frustrated that a fire marshal has to say that we have to put in, use taxpayer's money to install a sprinkler system inside a building where people sleep overnight, which yet I can have rental houses and I can put smoke detectors in and a fire extinguisher in, and they'll probably do the same thing. And it just aggravates me that we have to look at the possibility of doing that in order to build a building and costing all of us that much more money when smoke detectors and fire extinguishers will do something.
Might add, the estimate's about seventy thousand. So we're, we're, you know, we're talking about regulations shoved on us that people wonder why our buildings cost more. Well, that's one little item.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
So today's Ash Wednesday, um, Good Friday is on Friday, and Easter Sunday is the Sunday. So, um, you know, one part of mental health is making sure that you're right with God. You know, and I, I think if more people went to church and, um, and spent time in their spirituality, that would solve a lot of the mental health problems that we have. So I encourage everybody to get out to church on Sunday, um, and, um, and make that a regular practice. Um, in addition to that, there's a lot of Easter egg hunts and other things going on. Is, Deborah's here. Is it visithutch.com? Is that where they can find all the information? Downtownhutch.com?
Oh, visithutch.com will have events and activities, yes.
Yeah, okay, so downtownhutch.com or visithutch.com to see the local events that are going on, not for, just for Easter, but, um, you know, it's a good, it's a good site to check if, uh, if you, uh, if your Facebook events doesn't bring up anything and you're looking for something local to do. Um, there's a lot of local businesses that are supported, a lot of groups that are supported, so it's a good site to visit. Give you a little plug there. Um, but yeah, everybody have a, have a happy Easter.
Well, I'm gonna defer. I don't really have anything to talk about as that important today. I think probably, we're gonna move from this item into executive session with the commission, but I think we'll take a, we'll come back to executive session. We'll take a five-minute recess for anybody that needs that, and then we'll go into executive session at eleven thirty-six. And how many minutes do you think we need? I'll read this here for make a motion to. Twenty minutes? I moved the inner executive session until eleven fifty-one, eleven, no, eleven fifty-six, let's say that. Uh, with county commissioner, county administrator, county counselor, the subject matter to be legal obligation of the county, and the justification for the executive session is to discuss confidential legal matters, which are protected by attorney-client privilege.
Commissioner, also to include Deborah from the chamber.
Oh, okay, include Deborah Toofo from the chamber, so. And. Motion in a second? All, all approve, yea?
Yea.
Yea, we'll do it.
This doesn't talk about agenda, just says amendments. So, in this.
Yeah, I think we're back on, we're back in session now. So. Yes, go ahead Randy.
Commissioner Parks, I would request that the commission vote to add an item to the agenda. Right now, that would be relocation incentive agreement between Reno County, Kansas and Superior Holding. If you guys would make a motion and vote, then it could be added to the agenda and then a discussion and another possible vote.
I shall move.
Mr. Hurst moves, do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Freezen. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, so my thought is, is this is something that ought to be able to be viewed by the public ahead of time. I don't like the fact that we are adding this without the public being able to have input on this new policy since it is something new that we are doing. And so I do not think we should add this to the agenda, but have it on a future agenda.
No, it's your roll call.
Question?
Yeah, you got question?
You said that they, Deborah, you said that Superior is working on.
Point of order, sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I shouldn't said that.
I think, what was the motion? To amend the agenda?
Yeah, they amend the agenda.
Add the agenda, so we put this item on there.
So, we gotta get through that and then you get it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, it'd have been motioned and seconded, would be roll call.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Commissioner White soul?
No.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Motion passed four to one. Okay, now, what are we presenting?
The agenda item is the relocation incentive agreement between Reno County and Superior. And Deborah, twofold with the chamber is here to explain any expansion, but the Superior is looking to expand. And we're looking at an agreement that's been, that's being presented to the commission to use our economic development incentive line item to have a pilot for a new type of job incentive. We always have the job performance incentive that pays up to $1,500 per job. The contract in front of you now would be a relocation incentive for Superior to bring in new residents to Reno County. Superior would pay them an amount, $2,500 or more, and Reno County would be obligated to, based on the contract, if it's approved, to pay up to $2,500 per new job that's relocated to Reno County. So, they would have to become a resident of Reno County. And Deborah, do you have anything to add on that?
Sure. So, Superior Holding operates several facilities here in Hutchinson and Reno County. And they are considering an expansion of their facility that is on Corey Road. And their proposal is to add to that facility either through lease of an adjacent building or expansion of their current footprint. And that would be a several million dollar endeavor and to create 50 jobs. They have recently added 50 jobs over the last four years and they know the limitations of our current workforce. So, while they will make every effort to employ students coming out of our welding programs and employ other people here, they also acknowledge that they don't want to just churn a workforce with other employers and steal from their neighboring employer. So, they would like to look at this as a pilot program to try a promotion to relocate people to Reno County. They would be providing a relocation incentive to individuals moving here and they have to be documented that they are moving here by establishing residency, proving that their residency was elsewhere and that they established residence in Reno County. And they would have to provide that documentation to our office. And then on a quarterly basis, we would provide a report to Reno County to draw down from a set aside fund that would be capped at this point based on those 50 jobs at $2,500 per job, a total of $125,000 in order for them to then receive a portion of a match to that for, on a reimbursement basis. So, you're not upfronting the money. The company's still on the hook to upfront the money to relocate people here. But they feel like if they are successful at this, this would be creating a different model to incentivize business growth in Reno County.
Question for Deborah? Comments? Go ahead, Commissioner White soul.
Okay, so I do not like the way this is being rushed through without the option for public input. There, there are some real problems that I have with this policy. One, even though it says you have to look in Reno County first, it incentivizes taxpayers to pay for people that are not Reno County citizens to move them into Reno County. So, I do not like that. The wording leaves it open for them to bring criminal aliens from the, from the border, because we've, in a little explanation. So, we've got an asylum policy that says if you cross the border illegally and you say the magic word asylum, then you can potentially work legally in the United States. And this leaves it open for companies to go down to the border, bring criminal aliens into Hutchinson, and the county pay for their relocation. So, I do not like the fact that we're rushing it through without public approval or without public opinion. I think the public should have a right to look at this and to contact their elected officials and we should not be doing this last minute without talking to our constituents first.
Other comments?
Commissioners, I just like to make clear for people who watch the video but may not read the document. It is not, it requires any workers under this program to be legally under the law, the federal laws of the United States to be here to work. That's what it says. So, there might be some, yeah, in the state of Kansas. Obviously, a lot of people have, there's a, there's a wider debate that different people, different places could have about that. But, you know, we're limited by federal law, in my opinion.
But they, they could be relocated from another country under this provision, correct?
If they're legally, yeah, it's written, so people that are legally allowed to work in the United States could take a job in Reno County. That's what, that's all it was written as.
Chairman Parks, can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
About the timing? And so, I don't think there's an effort to rush this through other than we appreciated being able to present this information on behalf of the company in executive session first. They are still considering various options and we have not yet scheduled a time to meet with the city of Hutchinson about their traditional job performance program. So, that has not been acted on yet. There wouldn't be a reason why you couldn't put this on an agenda item at your next meeting and give you time, you know, to fully vet this. There, there wasn't an effort on our part to rush this unless you wanted to expedite it today.
We could do that. I would, I would probably be open to doing that. We've had a couple of meetings on this, just so the public understands, and there is a current policy in place to incentivize some employers. There is a current budget from the last year with money sufficient to do that in it. What we would be doing if we motioned to pass this would be basically raising the dollar amount a little bit on that and redirecting how it's spent to the individual instead of the business to try to get some employees here. And I understood from a conversation that it's very difficult to employ. I have times myself that it's difficult to find employees that I need. And so, we sometimes have to reach from without. John, I'm open to if somebody wanted to make a motion to hold it, I'll put it on the next agenda. I don't think there's a big rush. I agree with you, Deborah, in this. And just so the public knows, Randy Partington could put, if he had our authority, put this into motion because there is a budget and there is currently a policy to do that. I think there were some comments made about maybe going another direction to raise funds and I'm totally open to that because I don't like spending taxpayer dollars to private individuals or organizations either to incentivize them to employ people when I work for private, most private places I worked for all my life have never got funds to do that and still grew. And so, I think there's a way to do that, but I realize we're in a particular situation in this community where we've got an aging population and, and very little people coming up with skill sets that will fill these positions. I recognize that completely. I know there was a motion going to be entertained here in a little bit. And so, however that goes, I wanted to state my opinion on that. But I have, I don't know what this board feels, I have no problem moving it and I don't know if you do Randy, so that we can talk about it more. I love some of the ideas about fundraising some other ways too. It would involve people in a community and I think probably would generate more income.
And Commissioner, I wanted to put it on the agenda after our executive session so we could have this discussion. As Deborah mentioned, there's no, it doesn't have to be done today. It can be on a future agenda. But I wanted to have the discussion after the executive session so we kind of knew.
I'm totally okay with that. The rest of the board would like to go that direction.
I, I can make a motion.
Yep.
I'd move to place this on the consent agenda for the next meeting. I think we've talked about it in public session enough and everybody has it on the record.
I would, well, I'll wait for, if there's a second, but I would prefer we not be on the consent agenda.
Are you motioning?
We're waiting on us to see if there's a second.
Sometimes economic development goes extremely slow. Sometimes economic development opportunities come instantly. And sometimes we have to make some decisions on those relatively quick with considering the fact that there's been a lot of due diligence put into this over the past few weeks. So, if your motion failed.
I think it did. I didn't hear it.
I would approve, I would move to approve a pilot contract for two years for qualified employees.
I never spoke on that.
Relocation and setting.
I never spoke. I would second that.
Oh, okay. All right.
Sorry.
I didn't hear it, so.
I would second it to put it on the agenda. And I know you said consent agenda, but we can always discuss moving that if we need to.
Yeah, I would, I would motion to move that, or to amend the amendment, to move it to, move it off of the consent agenda into regular business.
Well, now we'd have to vote on that. Do you get a second?
I mean, consent agenda really should be unanimous consent.
Commissioners, just for your information, as we've set the budget, when we set the agenda, we put it together, we'll put things on consent. Sometimes the chair and I will talk, move things around. But anytime it then comes, if it was set on the consent and it shows up here and then Commissioner White soul, if you wanted to move it, it would be moved anyways.
Well.
So, regardless of where it starts, that's up to you guys, but it may end up in business anyways.
The reason I'm suggesting consent is, there's plenty of debate on this topic. You know, I think there's other items related to, you know, what do we do in the future? How do we raise more economic development funds? That could be an agenda item in the future. But we've talked through this particular topic. And I, I do think we're, we're on the edge of just allowing any member to pull something out. I think that's common courtesy. I think there should generally be a motion and a second or at least a ruling by the chair to move it. Like, no one person here can just move things on the agenda. But, you know, if we're all in agreement to move it and to, you know, friendly move, that's fine. But I don't think we should get in the habit of somebody says, I want to move it. And, and if there's disagreement on moving it, there should be a vote on it.
Well, it's open to a vote right there.
Yeah, that's a separate, separate topic.
Yeah, it was a separate topic, but yeah, I agree with you. It's, was there a second to John's amendment though? Didn't get one?
No.
Okay. All right, so the original motion, let's put it on the consent agenda. It was seconded by Ron Hurst, was that right or was it me? Me, I did that, yeah.
You did that, sir.
Further comment? Yeah, one of those days.
You're missing lunch, is that right?
No, no, no.
So, are we putting it on the consent agenda to avoid debate on this at the next meeting? You know, I, if, I would, I would say the public, you know, if you want your tax dollars going to bring people out of county and to take your jobs or potentially criminal, criminal aliens coming into Reno County to take your jobs, then you need to contact the other four commissioners because that's, that's what this policy does. And they are wanting to put it on the consent agenda to avoid debate. And to me, that is.
I, I think you should speak for yourself.
I, oh, I am speaking for myself.
You're, you're putting words in my mouth and perhaps their mouths. Like, like just state your own opinion. That's.
Well, it's my opinion that that's. Well, it's my opinion that that's the reason why it's going on the consent agenda rather than regular business, because ours wouldn't be on regular business.
The reason it should go on the consent agenda is we just debated it for 10 minutes on the public record, on video. If we get a lot of feedback on it, you know, we can make a motion together to pull it off. If there's no feedback, then it's efficient use to put it on the consent agenda so we don't have to have the same conversation next meeting again. That's why, it has nothing to do with illegal aliens, it has nothing to do with rushing this through.
I'll clarify, I did not say illegal aliens, I said criminal aliens.
It has nothing to do with that either. Like, the counselor has said this is only for legal workers. So you're fabricating information.
No, not.
Like, you're saying they're illegal just because that's your opinion?
No, I'm saying they're criminal. If you cross in the country, and don't cross through a port of entry, that is a criminal act.
Yeah, but you don't have the authority to make that decision.
No, that's the legal term, criminal alien is the legal term.
I know, but you can't tell somebody that they're illegal, you let the court do that.
Oh, no, I didn't say illegal, I said criminal.
That's the same thing.
No, it's a different, it's a different legal term.
I don't think this is productive, honestly.
This is why it should go on the consent agenda.
So there's no debate.
We've discussed this already, you probably won't add any more things, so I'm calling question.
We do. Roll call.
You actually have to vote on that.
Commissioner Bogner?
Just for, to put it on the agenda? Well, there was a motion.
There's a call to question, you have to immediately vote on whether, you know, to vote. It's silly, but that's the rule.
Okay.
So you're voting to vote.
You're voting to vote.
Voting to vote.
You could do a, all in favor?
A consensus?
Yeah, I could, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
To the call to the question?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I mean, it passed four to one, so it passed.
Well, we had a motion and a second, so roll call on the original motion.
Okay. Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
No.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you gentlemen.
And that concludes this session, we're adjourned.